The evening now coming to an end, we will have the invitations led by the Reverend Kerry James, followed by the blessed Boilie, but he has to change it. Reverend James.
Father, we've come today just to say thank you, thank you for this opportunity of coming together and praying in the spirit of reasoning and consent of working together in unity, residing in this place. God, we have come to say thank you because Lord, it was because of you that we woke up this morning. God, starting our way, and God, I ask for God that you would have your way in this place. In the name of Jesus, Father, do we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Councilwoman Irvin.
Here.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Here.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelly.
Here.
Councilwoman Eads.
Here.
Councilwoman Temple.
Here.
Councilman Kels.
Here.
For my question, I ask that early may come to the podium, we will now have elected a president, vice president for 2024.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I realize we're a few weeks into 2024 already, but this is my first time seeing many of you, speaking to you, so I want to wish you a happy 2024. Tonight, we will be electing a president and a vice president for 2024. And to remind you all, before we vote, as after you nominate, your choice is the first person to receive four votes win. So we're going to start with the president, and I'm going to open the floor for nominations.
I'd like to nominate President Kenny Kellis for the time.
Anyone else?
I would like to nominate Gloria Cakes.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I would ask that someone make a motion to close the nominations.
Make motion to close.
Okay, now that it has been properly closed, Mr. Kellis was nominated first, so we'll open the floor on Mr. Kellis first. Ms. Burns, what you calling the robe?
Councilman Irvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Nay.
Councilwoman Cakes.
Nay.
Councilwoman Eads.
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kellis.
Aye.
Okay, then, today was the first nominee, and he received five votes this year. President of the Bodleus City Council of 2024 will be Kenny Kellis. Okay, we're going to move to vice president and follow the same format. At this time, I would like to open nominations for vice president.
I'm nominating Mark Urban.
Anyone else?
I'm nominating Gloria Cakes.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I ask that someone make a motion to close the nominations.
Aye.
It has been properly moved, and second, the nominations are closed, so I hereby request a vote for Vice President Mark Urban who was nominated first, so we will start with Mr. Urban.
Councilman Irvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cakes.
Nay.
Councilwoman Eads.
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple.
Aye.
Councilman Kellis.
Aye.
Mr. Urban has received five votes, he's received the four required to win. So I would like to introduce to you all tonight President Kenneth Kellison, Vice President Mark Urban. Amen.
Thank you.
As before, if you want to see the SIA, you can look from the other side here. We have some adoption of resolutions to be offered to you tonight. But first, we have to have the motion to set the minutes from our last meeting on December the eighteenth, twenty-fourth, thirty.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilman Irvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cakes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Eads.
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple.
Aye.
Justice Brown.
Aye.
Kellis, Councilwoman.
Aye. Thank you, Reverend. Now we have adopted some of our resolutions, the first one to be introduced tonight, being the first. We have a resolution to put on the table, the resolution has to be brought off of the table, and it will be brought off by Ms. Kels.
This is when...
The, uh, resolution that was taken at the last meeting, the Bodleus Police...
Second. The Bodleus, a resolution for the city of Bodleus, Bodleus Police Department, cops saving.
Do we have the motion taken off of the table?
So...
We have a second.
Second.
Roll call please.
That's President Irvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Irvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cakes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Eads.
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple.
Aye.
President Kellis.
Aye.
Now we have a resolution to offer to that pass, we have a resolution to be introduced tonight. Captain Irvin, okay.
This, this particular, um, resolution about our Bodleus Police Department focusing in on their cops, uh, saving, and, uh, it was actually revised to include not only the police, Bodleus Police Department, but all of the departments, whereas they focus in on how we can save money in the city of Bodleus. Now, uh, since we are focusing on other, uh, areas and other departments, uh... At this time, I do have a motion, you know, to, uh... On that particular... on that particular resolution.
Second.
Roll call please. Now, Mr. President, one more, one more. Are we voting just to remove this off the table or what?
No, we just.
Okay, we're actually voting on this.
On the whole.
Mr. President, if, if I may, um, earlier today, I met with Bogalusa Police Department leadership for about an hour and a half. Um, we are working through some inner, inner, um, things on the budget. I'm not actually on the table at this time.
Y'all heard what the mayor said, that he's making members of the Bogalusa Police Department, and they are discussing some subjects with the budget, what they argue the president of the police department is aware of. And the mayor has asked that we put it back on the table. We have a motion for one of the council person to put this back on the table for further notice.
I make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We have a motion with the second, now do we have any public discussion on whether or not to put it on the table? There's no discussion to put it?
I got some discussion. So, um, Joseph, Joseph Gerald Smith, one five zero five four, Highway ten seventy-five, Bogalusa. Uh, what it sounds like to me, and I don't understand everything that you guys do, but it sounds like to me you are taking an effort to do a self-assessment, organizational assessment, in order to look at cost savings across the board. Is that, do I understand that correctly, man? Cause, um, it's, it's high-performing organizations routinely do self-assessments. So I'm totally opposed to not doing self-assessments or organizational assessments within the city of Bogalusa, because I don't think we've done that.
Thank you for that, Mr. Smith. Are there any other discussions from the public on this matter? There being no other public discussion, is there any council discussion?
I do have council discussion, uh, I do, uh, actually believe that we should do assessments across the board with all the departments. Uh, if the police department will be, um, looking at the budget and getting with the mayor on, uh, the assessment of the police department, what, well, my question is, why not do it, uh, uniformly with all of the, uh, with all of the departments? Uh, if I can hear from, uh, I have a question, Officer, Officer Perron, if you would please. Okay, uh, as far as, uh, the assessments, uh, just police department versus everyone else, what would be your, uh, what would be your opinion today?
So, I do believe that, um, an analysis and change should start at the table through the administration. And we spoke with the mayor in Lynn today, and he has offered that opportunity to us to sit down and talk before we get to this board. He also indicated that he was going to get with other departments, and we were going to have regular meetings and try to resolve all these problems prior to bringing it to this, to this extent. And I think that's an improvement for the entire city and department as well.
Well, this particular, this particular resolution, uh, says exactly that, for all departments, you know, to get together and, uh,
I, I understand.
Excuse me, sir, excuse me, sir, for all departments to get together and.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, hold your comments, damn it. Y'all want to make comments, just go ahead and make your comments, damn it, but we're trying to run a business up here, okay? Please hold y'all's cell comments, damn it, for us. It's hard for us to hear what's going on as it is. Thank you for your kind consideration for this council and the administration and your own self. Please just be patient with us. Just not easy sitting out there, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, because, and excuse me here, but because my goal is to resolve the issue, uh, of saving money throughout the organization.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Throughout, you know, I understand that, and, uh, with the mayor being with other departments, this is exactly what this, uh, particular resolution is about.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
The only comment I'd like to make on this matter at the table, that be that the mayor has made a statement here tonight, and he will go speak of Bogalusa Police Department and other entities within the side of the city. I think it can be possibly our best interest if we give him that opportunity and maybe see what the course is between now and the first meeting in February, if we can bring this back up again and see what headway, if it could present us with anything different than we presented us in the past. That's just my discussion on it. I think if he's willing to work with police department, he's willing to work with the other administrative departments of this city and bring forth the conclusion of what's happened here, then I think we should give him the opportunity to do so, as well as the administrators of each department that can sit down and discuss it anyway. I think the people that need to be responsible, or the people that's in them business, and that are in those positions, not the people on the street. I think that, I think that we should let, uh, pay them, give them an opportunity, say by the second, by the second meeting in February, I'll have to get my paper out a minute, but I think the second meeting in February would be good. Him and all other department heads can get together as the city administrators, bring us something to work with, or we go back to square one and give what this case is spoken about. That's just my opinion, my opinion alone.
Thank you. And just to add clarity, I am all for assessment. I proposed the original idea, uh, but between that time and now, we had it about a month, so Mr. Bailey is in the final stages of getting ready to work with department heads over the next two weeks on their specific budgets. Uh, we are working with PFM, uh, financial firm out of New Orleans, we've been receiving technical assistance through, um, US Department of Housing and Urban Development, and they are working with us on our budget as well. So all of this will be brought to you, um, over, within the next four weeks, and at that time, like you say, we can revisit.
I'm on it, I'm here. I want to say that the next meeting, if we're being discussed, will be February the twentieth. February the twentieth, that would be the second meeting in February, that would give me plenty of time to meet with all the administrators. If it's not satisfactory to this city council, then we can bring back this Gory case resolution that she's offering, because I think it's, uh, something that needs to be done. But I think we need to give a fair shake, all parties involved, get the administration with the city, along with the mayor, the mayor on board, proceed the administrator, and then come back to this council with the report. If it's not favorable, then we'll go with the second resolution, that's my opinion. Now we can go on to any more discussion from the council, the table.
Well, I do have an additional discussion, uh, Mayor Trump, uh, obviously, would that be accurate, uh, uh, timeline for you, is that, would that be enough time, uh, for you to do the assessment with, uh, the department?
Uh, I tend to agree with Council President Kellis on this matter, um, I think the second meeting in February is more, more pertaining to our internal time.
Oh, I heard first week, okay, that's why I was asking for you.
More discussion from the council? Now, roll, roll call, uh, both our roll calls, what do you think?
Councilwoman Irvin.
Uh.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cates.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kiddies.
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple.
Aye.
Justice Kellis.
Aye. Thank you, Captain, thank you. Good. Would now like to have another resolution read to you tonight, to be interviewed to you by Councilwoman Case.
A resolution to read adopt or override veto dated December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, relating to a resolution to request an opinion from the attorney generals from the state of Louisiana relating to, uh, watermarks. Whereas the following details, reasons for veto dated twenty twenty-eight, December twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, and responses for override to be vetoed. First of all, the particular veto indicates, uh, to, uh, Brenda Ford, Bogalusa City Council Secretary, I have vetoed ordinance number thirty-sixty-three, which was passed December eighteen, twenty twenty-three. Uh, number one, the resolution, it is a resolution, it wasn't an ordinance. According to law, and I will read the laws, you cannot veto a, a resolution. It was indicating, it was thirty-sixty-three, ordinance number thirty-sixty-three, which does exist, it was resolution thirty-sixty-three. Uh, the override, this document is not ordinance thirty-sixty-three, non-existent by resolution thirty-sixty-three, which was passed by the city councils. Whereas according to the handbook for municipal officials in Louisiana, chapter two, forms if a resolution absent constitutional or statutory requirements, but forms if the resolution is and if resolutions are very, very informed. Whereas revised after thirty forty, forty, four oh six, uh, in amendment recording the publication of an ordinance and resolution. A, any act of the board which is not law shall be, shall be by resolution. A resolution shall be approved by an affirmative vote of majority of the members of the board present at the meeting. No resolution shall require the signature or other action of the mayor to become effective. B, if a board consists of more than three members of affirmative vote, of two-thirds of the vote members shall be required to override a mayor's veto. If a board overrides an ordinance vetoed by the mayor, the ordinance becomes law until the act by the board. Now this, as I said, they're more or less, the chart is more or less indicating, if this was an ordinance, which is, it is not an ordinance, it's a, it's a resolution. So, but I mean statutes, the six statutes that require, that, uh, is in effect, that. Whereas Bogalusa City Charter, uh, section two twelve, submission of an ordinance by the mayor. Ordinance vetoed by the mayor shall be submitted promptly to the secretary, who in turn shall submit them to the council and the next regular or special meeting here in these seven days after publication of the veto. C, should the council vote to read adopt the ordinance by the favorable vote of at least two-thirds of its authorized membership sentenced for us, said ordinance shall be considered final adopted and become law irrespective of the veto by the mayor. Two, the policy and procedures within the public records department are clear and precise on how an individual should obtain a public record. This is the override. No policy has been presented pertaining to the watermark. I have not looked and I seen, and I looked through the documents, I have seen, uh, public records request, uh, from the, uh, from the, uh, public records, uh, journalist, journalist officer, and I have not seen a, a, uh, a watermark of a policy pertaining to watermark. Number three, the city Bogalusa watermark is nothing more than proof that the recorded, that the record requested was obtained legally. Override, which local or state or federal legal law clarifies this, is proof of the legality of this matter. Mean, you know, which law addresses that? As it is a, uh, it is proof. The watermark on a, uh, on a document, a public records record is proof, which, which law clarifies that? Number four, and followed by city Bogalusa's policy, policy procedure. Override, which Bogalusa policy and procedures on the letter dated November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, attached from, uh, this lastly asked thing, a study of public records for the city of Bogalusa. Public records request of ten, she indicated public records request of ten twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, and supplemental request of November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, I had, I had acquired a watermark, and she replied, in addition, please forward any information you may have or may receive regarding the use of a visible watermark on the public records, or vis, or the public records, uh, visible and provide to the request. Uh, Ms. Pittman also indicated comment requesting to forward or any information led immediately led to leave that no policy again existed on watermark, nor a policy, uh, via council vote on watermark existed. Mean, uh, there, there has not been a policy on watermarks that we have actually voted on, the council voted on. On November twenty-first, this is the rest of the veto there, on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, an email from the city attorney of May details, there is nothing wrong with this document. Mean, he had reviewed, uh, one of the documents that had watermark across it, and he indicated nothing was wrong with the document. Again, these comments were not presented in policy form, so I, I, you know, still looking for the policy on watermark, let me hear this, watermark. As well as ordinance twenty, as, okay, the rest of it, as well as ordinance twenty-seven thirty-eight, which was unanimously voted on by Bogalusa Council, this is the override. Ordinance twenty-seven thirty-eight does not address watermark, but it entail, it is entitled an ordinance repelling ordinance eighteen ten and establishing charges to be made by the city of Bogalusa for producing reproductive or digital public records request fees. And it was attached to each one of the council, it was about fees, it was not about watermark, as indicated in the letter. In addition, on six, in addition, the watermarks helped the public records custodian organize the request in his or her department in a note of understatement, in its, and it indicated, is our intention to provide that the requested public records are provided to the request. Override, this resolution simply is requiring what may be, what may be the AG opinion on this matter? It's simply a AG opinion, and it's simply a, a resolution which is not law. What may be the reason law on this letter? And I asked, I, I, uh, And I asked, I, I, uh, uh, required with the Attorney General, uh, required with some other entities, part, and I have not found anything. Therefore, now that we have read the, uh, the city council of the city of Bogoosa does hereby go on record and subdue this resolution. And as I said, I want to read through it so folks can understand the actual laws that retain two resolutions versus, uh, ordinance. And if this veto, it was not an ordinance, it was a resolution. And, uh, I just, uh, would like, uh, the council to support, as well as the mayor, as well as the, uh, city attorney to support this request for, uh, AG opinion on watermarks. Thank you.
Mr. President, with all due respect, I'd, I'd like to ask the council not to override my meeting. Um, the reason being, any elected official can request an advisory opinion from the Attorney General, so we are for sure in, in search of answers. Um, then nothing can stop the Council on the Case from approaching AG's office to ask for an opinion. This resolution is to basically give the council's weight to this, uh, and I think that it will be to the detriment because we are running like a whirlpool machine in the public records department. Ms. Leslie Pittman has done an outstanding job. She has been going to different trainings across the state. Um, she has brought this matter to them, and nobody has stated that this practice is illegal. I'm talking people who deal with public records today. Um, at this time, I'd like to bring Ms. Pittman to the podium.
Now I would like to, uh, excuse me, um, Councilwoman Kate, she did, uh, reference the city of Bogoosa ordinance two seven three eight. It is an ordinance, a repealing ordinance eighteen ten and establishing charges to be made by the city of Bogoosa for producing reproductive or digital public records. Uh, and we are required by law to publish the fees for public records. This is information from the twenty twenty-three legislative state, uh, session, and this is regarding public records and open meetings. Uh, it's SB two zero, SB two thirteen requires development and posting of public record law reproduction fee schedules. Whether copies are physically or digitally, digitally reproduced, the government must have a fee schedule that is posted, so it is readily available to the public. And we do have this be, uh, posted. The use of the watermark is part of our established protocol for processing public record requests. We have researched and have not found it to be illegal. There is not an attorney general opinion that exists. I've been told this, uh, you know, through my conversations with him. We, again, we have found it not to be illegal. It is our proof of providing authentic records to the requester. Uh, it's how we verify that the request was fulfilled by the custodian according to the law. It is how we acknowledge who requested the record and when. We have to also note by the requester that their public record request may become a public record. Uh, and I think that, well, one of the main reasons is that, um, no one should provide public records to a requester outside of me. Uh, the protocol indicates that, that's what the law indicates. And we have found that public records have been distributed and fees not charged. So that's an issue. I first found this out in June. There was a public citizen that requested public records. It was the, um, it was the, uh, the two thousand twenty-three budget. And I responded, and, you know, after the records were compiled, I did inform her that we had them available, and she never came to view the records. But I was at a city council meeting where I heard the public citizen say that she had received them from a council person. That's an issue for me, because the council, uh, this ordinance two seven three eight was introduced by Councilwoman Smith, second by, uh, Councilman Urban, and unanimously passed on March twenty, uh, first of twenty twenty-three. A seated councilman should not use their position to circumvent the established procedure for obtaining public records and to waive fees that are unanimously voted to, uh, that, that were supposed to be enforced. So, to prevent public records from being put out there that we did not provide, we have, had to come up with the reason why. And not too long ago, there were public records that were requested. The public citizen came to you and she, you know, uh, they were able to take pictures with a handheld device, which, okay, we have no control over what a public citizen does with public records requested and obtained the right way. So, we saw public, we saw public records posted on social media, and also we saw public records posted on so, uh, social media that had not been provided by me. These were November twenty twenty-three financials that had been provided only to the council. And I know they had not come from me because there was no watermark then. So, use of the watermark again, that's our proof of providing authentic records to the requester, is how we verify that the request was fulfilled by the custodian according to the law, and is how we acknowledge who requested a record and when. That's all information I have.
Thank you. All right, it's time back here, ladies and gentlemen. I asked y'all to pray and clap and so we can do more. Just, I know y'all are excited about what's being said, and one side, and the other side, whatever, up and down. Hope, just, just hope you, hope you, your fingers down a little bit, boys, you will. Keep your comments to yourself, and when it gets time for you to speak, you can get up there and whatever you're bumming about, and I'll be, come up here and tell it to the podium at the end of the game, when that is time for you to speak. And is anybody in the, is anybody else, I mean, in the public, saying about this? All right, we've heard the resolution was read to you by Ms. Kate, and we need a motion at this time over the override of the watermark. I need a motion, and the session will have discussion.
I'll make a motion.
You have a second.
I'm sorry, my question, Phil, is what exactly, what are we, motion?
The resolution you just read, do all of that, I mean, do you need to?
No, I thought, I thought you were, uh, motion to, to, uh, so, yes, override, but, but not.
We have a motion, and a second. Mr. McLeod.
Yeah.
Remind if I, you shall, in your, in your, uh, your, uh, your, uh.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm, um, for, for, to, to, um, I didn't understand ninety percent of what you said, Ms. Kate, and I'm sorry. I think that it needs to be a lot simpler and a lot clearer. And if we could go back and just give a simple explanation of what we're doing, that would be really helpful. I, I appreciate your desire to have people informed, but it was overwhelming at a certain point, and I just got to understand what you were saying.
I'm sorry, I, I love you.
I know, and I, I, your intent is good, it's not a criticism, it's just, just, I lost the whole thing in the process. So if somebody could simplify and clarify this for me, I would really, really appreciate it.
Okay, I'm sorry, because, you know, I, our, uh, our, uh, agenda has been placed on the website, and, uh, for those of you who don't know, and I think that everyone had viewed the agenda, actual agenda on the website. This is, this is about, uh, watermarks, uh, that are going across the public record requests, uh, to get a, obtain a attorney general opinion on the watermarks, get their opinion, which, which, uh, when we discussed this initially, uh, in a finance meeting, uh, the mayor, uh, indicated he would wait for AG opinion, and we discussed in a meeting with, uh, Attorney May at another meeting, council meeting, uh, committee meeting, and he agreed to, um, submit an AG opinion, uh, submit a request for an AG opinion. Now, uh, what I just said, what I just read, uh, was the information, the difference between a resolution and a ordinance. Now, this, this, the language in the veto said to veto ordinance number, uh, thirty sixty-three. Well, we cannot veto a ordinance, that's what I'm saying, accord, according to the charter. Accord to the charter, accord to some other, uh, uh, entities that was checked out. Now, I did check with the, uh, I did check with the, uh, um, Louisiana Municipal Association Attorney, and which she has a, uh, a class on public records. And she indicated once a public record is out, that the requester can do what they will on it, on their public record. So I do not agree with folks putting stuff out on, uh, necessarily on Facebook. Okay, and I guarantee you, uh, those records that this, uh, Pittman had indicated that were received from the council, well, I know that I have not released any, any, although they are public, our budgets, or what have you, and I kind of, I had heard that before, and I kind of did a poll in this place, and I, you know, I would think any council, I wish the individual was here to say exactly who they received those records from, from, to put out on Facebook like that. And then also it would say that, that, uh, I could go and get an opinion from AG myself. This is not what was, what practiced, this is not what was related to me. It has to be a vote from all of the council members to, uh, submit to the Attorney General, along with a letter from the, uh, from our city attorney to see that Attorney General opinion. So, my, my, my basic is, why the watermark right now? I'm hearing people, uh, have said that, you know, laws do not prohibit that, but I have not seen an actual law that says that. That's, that's what I'm saying, and that's why I would like AG opinion actually on it, see what they say about it, you know, um, see. I have some other material.
I have one more comment about that in regards to public records. I think that public records are just that, and there's no requirement to keep them confidential after you obtain them, and I think that that's absolutely incorrect. Once, once you've got a public record, it's a public record, and that whole intent is to.
That's what the, trying to relate to me, Louisiana Municipal Association.
I understand that, but once you pay the fee, what you do with that public record is up to you. I mean, you look at all kinds of examples, journalists and everybody, and all of a sudden, you don't share the public records without paying them, and then judicial fees, so I guess.
Ms. McLeod, I, I don't think that's the argument here.
Well, then she was saying that, shares.
Right, the argument here is that council members should not be giving out public records when there is a, uh, established procedure to obtain these public records. Anybody can kind of get the public records, that's not what, what.
But what you said is they should not be showing it on Facebook, and they have everybody.
Just getting back to the reaction to your question, for you, for any further, Ms. McLeod. Now, what I think there, there's a misunderstanding of what really is being done here is that for the, the override, so how to override, but the veto of a resolution, not an ordinance. You cannot veto a resolution. You can veto an order, which is law. The mayor vetoed a resolution. And the resolution, it had to do with watermarks on certain documents that had been named and put out by someone with the city. What we're wanting to do is get the override of the resolution corrected, so they can take it off, if they get an ordinance, he can veto the ordinance, but he can't veto a resolution. We're trying to get the resolution back to be sent to the Attorney General, if that's what she goes and decides to do. But right now, we're just trying to get the override correctly for the resolution, because we cannot, we cannot do the, uh, the resolution, uh, the veto of the resolution. So that's got to come back, and if he wants to wait till later day or something, he can. Is there any more discussion from the public on this matter?
Congressman Manon, two oh two Durham Street. Appreciate you breaking it down and helping us understand that. Uh, from the presentation, I do have one question though. Uh, for a situation, did I hear correctly that once an individual obtains public records, if they choose to disseminate that, they, they are at liberty to do so?
That's going to Louisiana Municipal Association, uh, Attorney, Attorney Karen White.
So if, so if an individual were to obtain public records without paying the city a fee, would there be any type of repercussions against them?
Well, there's, there's no, nothing in record right now, that's, I'm.
That's false, that's false, because if an elected official is giving out records that they did not pay for, that is a violation of the government code of, so that's false.
What we need to do, what needs to be done, just in any way. Mr. Coman, under scrutiny, is to advise the way to no other, not, if you come in and get a public document, and you paid him about twenty dollars for the document, and you go out there and you make thirty copies of it, did you get paid for it or not, I don't know. But now, you gave back thirty dollars that you, you paid for yourself, and you gave it to somebody else in copy, and you checked the city out, that's what we are looking at. I think the best thing, though, is, the, the way to look at this, that's why they had an emotion for us to page the documents, to start. Now, the other thing, the other thing you've got to realize, we're not only talking about the watermarks and much, we are the override, I meant, of the ordinance and the resolution, okay? We're off on this track, because that's what the resolution, the veto, was for us to send from the opinion of the Attorney General, to find out if watermarks could be done or not or not. Now, the veto, the thing about it is, it shouldn't have been vetoed, it was vetoed, we want to un-veto it. This other stuff is just lack of discussion. Nothing needs to be discussed anymore about watermarks. We need to be discussing whether or not the resolution should be an override of a veto. Does that help any?
Yeah, essentially, what you're saying is that we should just be focusing on ordinance versus resolution.
Exactly, what, what happened, you both, what, the deal is, the watermark was the, the reason for the resolution. What happened in the resolution is that vetoed by the mayor. Mayor cannot veto a resolution, so we're trying to get it back up to have the, the resolution brought back to the table, I mean, overriding his veto, and have the documents sent to the, uh, Attorney General for the opinion. No longer, and there's nothing going to stop him from doing business as usual. Next.
Senator Carroll Smith, please. Ten and ten West End Street, Bogoosa.
How many addresses have you got?
Got two.
You're the one that you live at, the one that you vote for, I mean, that you have a, a mention of, where do you live? Do you live in Bogoosa, or do you live, not, please, personally?
Please, pray.
Okay, what's that, your address, down at ten what?
One five zero five four highway ten seventy-five, Bogoosa. So, uh, social media and misinformation is killing our society, our community, misinformation. And I believe that the watermarks is an effort to validate information given and distributed, and it ensures that this information is coming from the right people, and the mayor is pretty into it. So, why we have to go through all this process to establish the best practice, I'm not sure of. And that's all I can say.
I'm going to go hand to hand talking about this. Wait a minute, Lord, I want to get up, wait, get up. I don't know what I'm saying. Just wait a minute, could I get the council discussion, sir, please? Just sit if we've got...
A resolution, it was stated that the council votes on, if they're in agreement of it, doesn't carry away the law, or the Attorney General's opinion, even though he's the attorney. That's just what it is, an opinion, just like you and I have. Now, what we're seeing, it seems, and I've been listening a long time, it seems like someone is playing games to undermine our city. We voted all of the council and the mayor. The public is the one that's being cheated out of. We expect for y'all to take care of the business of the city, not the fighting. The mayor against the council, the council against the mayor. There's the appropriate way, if you want some information from the city, this public information, there's a process to go through. You go down and you request it, you pay your fee. You know, when the, the legislature first started, and he had put the committee together, and he wants to keep all of his committees, I thought it was mis-stated, I thought it was putting a fox in the hen's house. It seemed like it turned out to be that. Because it is a treat, people said, "Ripple committee is strong, replying to the legislature bill." And we know that it was court time, and we went to court. And the ripples, they were requested, they couldn't be removed, because they weren't there. So, that's a game that's being played in the people of this city, they are tired of it, that's all it is.
This will be our last yes on this matter.
Thank you, Senator, nineteen thirty-one B. W. Place. I agree with Mr. Austin. It's too much game playing here in Volusia. What we need to do is get together and work with this mayor to stop all this confusion. Ms. Pittman, I love what you said, your statement that you made about the records, I agree with you. On this crap, I don't agree with you, thank you.
Are there any council discussions on this matter?
Yes, I got that too. We did do an internal investigation, the council people, we went down the line to find out exactly where the October twenty-three financials was distributed. And we have come up with a determination that that was not council records. Some of the council had not received those records at the time. Some of the council don't even have access to the city email systems. Now, that, that's what we eventually corrected, I'm sure. And I don't blame the mayor for that, and we're not here to discuss that. What we're here to discuss is about watermarking documents. I did see some watermark documents that was beyond recognition, where you could not read the numbers on them. The watermark system, if they're going to continue to use it, needs to be changed, that's fact for me, my suggestion. Another thing, as far as the budget, you, the public, should receive that for free of charge. The yearly budget, you should know what this government is spending. You should not have blocks, the city charter provides that in the documentation. It should be on view in the public record calendar, it should be viewed at the Washington Parish Library. And I'll, I'll go and tell you one thing, by the way, state law will back me up, you can send a digital copy across the air map about the budget, and to allow the citizens, the citizens, each person in there, no matter what color of God's rainbow you are, you should be entitled to ask questions. And that budget needs to be out there way before it reaches the agenda. So, we all sit down, and we won't have an argument, a fight, a dispute about what's in that budget for next year. Thank you very much, I will be...
Any further council discussions?
My final comment on it is that, no, they're not going to be paid at all, for most of you that might know me, I don't play games, I'm simply wanting an opinion, AG opinion. And as Ms. Austin said, it's simply an opinion, but an opinion on that level pertaining to watermarks. Now, if we have a policy in place, as, you know, Ms. Pittman was, was speaking as if we had a policy in place, but if we have updated policy in place pertaining to the council could review and vote on, I would be willing to table this. You know, but, or we go ahead as is, and we can receive an update after we vote on this override. But no, there's not any games played. There's not against the mayor. There's, there's something you said, no, it's not.
Ms. Kate, this, this has nothing to do with me, this is the mayor, this is about...
I know, the, the say was maybe...
Yeah, I finished.
No, I didn't finish, sir. This is council party, I didn't finish.
Please, outbursts continue. I want the first and main outbursts executed out there, uh, removed from their presence, okay? And that's outburst, anybody in here, they need to make y'all. We cannot conduct business with all this rhetoric going on, and I thank you, gentlemen, and you ladies for that. Continue, Ms. Kate, please.
As I indicated, it's not about playing games, it's simply, we have not had a problem with getting any type of AG opinion. We haven't had that many, you know, hey, I tried to get it myself, mayor, but they indicated that we have to have a vote, a majority vote, two-thirds of a vote, from this, from the council in order to obtain an opinion. And with that being said, I make a motion that this particular...
We have a motion, and second, we're in discussion on this. The reading standard is... And the override, now, you may mention that you might want to table this, you want to make a motion to table it, or we want to make, or you want to finish?
Hold on, hold on, as it is.
As it is, all right. Vote by roll call, please. Uh, we don't have any more discussion, I have a good case, we're in council discussion, everybody I think said what they wanted to say about this matter. This matter is not about watermarks, right now, this matter is about whether or not the resolution was vetoed properly, or not, and it was not. It was vetoed, and it shouldn't have been vetoed, that's the whole way in the nutshell. And once we get something back to face, say, the watermark sugar should not be done, then we'll hold that, we'll hold court on that. But right now, it's about the resolution, the override, the veto, that's where we're at. Roll call, please.
Senator President Urban?
Aye.
Councilwoman Depples, aye. Councilwoman Smith, aye. Councilwoman Kay, aye. Councilwoman Keys, aye. Councilwoman Temple, aye. President Kelly, aye.
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, I can say simply, don't, don't take it that I'm trying to be rude to anybody on this speech. It's kind of frustrating, the wrong people here to make these comments, and we're trying to hold a business meeting. We'll be getting out of these other discussions y'all have after a while, or whatever, y'all. You know, it's, it's going to be open business, but right now, we're trying to conduct a business. All I'm asking you to do is be fair with us, we're trying to be fair with y'all, and I thank you for it. And the more I speak, the louder I'll be, that's something the military, I usually do for that. I apologize for my voice, it's the only one I got in my face, and I can't change it, I apologize. Moving on, the next, the next, we have an introduction of the ordinance. Introduction of ordinance to be introduced by Councilwoman Kelly.
An ordinance related to a general spending freeze in the city of Volusia is proposed by the Volusia City Council. This is a day to spend authorization, it must always be given by the council through the budget process, or by a single appropriation. Whereas, according to Louisiana Local Governmental Budget Act, the fiduciary...
Point of information.
Responsibility...
Point of information. Mr. President, then, if this is an introduction, do we have to sit here through a reading of this entire ordinance?
Yes. Everyone, and the reason is because everyone may not have received or had opportunity to review our actual agenda, which we have all attached at this time on the website, but this is in case everybody does not, not have opportunity to review. Well, this is the very point part. According to Louisiana Local Government Budget Act, the fiduciary responsibility of a public official or officer charged with the responsibility of planning, adopting, amending, and implementing the budget are significant and serious. Any public official who knowingly or intentionally adopts, amends, and implementation, and adopt the budget wherein this expenditure exceeds the funds available may be found guilty of malfeasance in office and subject to the penalties contained within that criminal statute, that's revised statute fourteen thirteen, fourteen one thirty-four. Whereas, a discretionary general spending freeze may determine a projection or forecast in various of five percent of greater shortage in revenue or in five percent of greater overs in expenditures. Whereas, contributing factors to general spending freeze are as follows. Numerous extensions granted by Louisiana legislative officers in order to, in order to complete the closeout of twenty-twenty-two books includes the statewide agreement procedures of the year ended in December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Failed to provide twenty-twenty-three revised budget, and by Volusia City Charter timelines of the twenty-twenty-four budget, it is overdue, and request of expenditures and revenue reports in accordance to section four oh four, however not provided. In addition, months, monthly balance and income sheets shall reflect. Whereas, the city may operate at fifty percent of, will now share its twenty-twenty-two budget, thus, the freeze shall be in effect until the budgets are in place in order to ensure revenue is in place to pay bills, to pay bills and increase city surplus. General spending freeze includes determining as follows, a high cause for positions not impacted by service, adding or creating new staff position, reducing funding for facilities related to capital projects, discontinue all non-essential discrepancy functions, and most items detailed will be considered to the budget. Now, I'm going to stop reading at this point, President Kelly. And at this point, I would like myself to table this, because the, the mayor indicated that Mr. Bay was working on the budget to compensate along with the police department and other, and other entities, such as the administration, public works, and the fire department. So, I do make a motion. Okay, well, I made a motion at this point to... Okay, I reform that it could be tabled at the next meeting. So, I would do that, since it was disclosed that we lead, as far as the police department, the second, this is something you decided on the second meeting in February.
Second meeting will be the twenty-second February, when they'll be, they'll be back in the council.
Okay.
Moving on, next ordinance to be introduced, introduced by myself, uh, Councilwoman Kelly. It's an ordinance, it's an introduction to ordinance to appoint the Robles Law Office LLC as special legal counsel to Volusia City Council for purposes of the Latin legal counsel in representation for any and all matters which have to be approved. This will be discussed by next council meeting. Next, we have a ordinance to be introduced to you by Councilwoman Kay.
No.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Depples. Overlooked, there you are.
Hey, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Clean Cut Water LLC for a six-inch left water main. Now, this was ran as an emergency ordinance about two weeks ago, or whenever we had our last council meeting. So, we're changing it into a regular ordinance as required by the city charter, so y'all understand. This was a main that was broke at the corner of Columbia, and what is that, Mr. Pat?
Second Street.
Uh, well, again, Second Street, uh, it was a major ordeal, they worked on it for several days, Public Works did. And even though it's not in my district, thank you very much, Public Works, for doing that. And I'm working with the contractor too, because it was a mess over there. So, anyway, that's, and I do make a, I do make a motion for this.
I do think it...
Point of order, can somebody say that thermostat on seven and six, and don't touch it here?
We will now discuss this ordinance effectively, I mean, that, we have a motion in the second for this water main, right? Anybody in the public or the, got any questions about this, Matt? There being up of the public, or any council, got any more discussion about the water main? The mayor, thank you for that, what?
A matter of only question, what was the cost? Any question, verify, we may have those funds.
Well, it's an emergency, I mean, we may do. Running as a geyser? Uh, good question. Has, uh, mayor, the mayor, has, has this contract even paid yet, or any of y'all can speak to that? Okay.
Yes.
All right, good, all right, thank you.
Vote by roll call, please.
Senator President Urban?
Aye.
Councilwoman Depples?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kay?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Next ordinance to be introduced, introduced by Councilwoman Kelly.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Volusia to enter into a new agreement with Washington Parish Castle on AG. Now, this particular ordinance pertains to the, the building that's on Austin and Bear Street. It was formerly Youth Building. And there was a, from what I understand, a... And there was a, from what I understand, the building does belong to Council on Adrian. However, Council on Adrian, after speaking with their attorney today because of some concerns that I received, he indicated that the city, he, they would like to establish a relationship with the city. And this particular, and he also asked me to really emphasize the individuals that occupy this building has to have liability insurance, and they have to provide proof of this liability insurance. This is between, at this time, between Love Outreach and between the city of Bublusa with the use, with the usage of the second harvest into the building. It's a very expensive lease, and it is on our website, so I'm not, I'm not gonna go through it at this time, but this is what, this is about. I do make the most of this.
All right, she got the second. If there are any public discussion, ordinance arrived with the bid reviewed by Councilwoman Kelly. Mr. Corset?
Yes.
Come forward, sir. Take the name of that, before.
Mr. Richard Corset, seven sixty-four, Michael Richardson Road. Ms. Kate.
Yes.
Is there anyone in that building now?
No, there's none.
Okay. And if we have an insurance policy on it, is the city of Bublusa paying for that?
No. Each individual occupant has their own liability insurance. The city, it's between a leasing, the two leasing orders, or the city of Bublusa and Love Outreach.
Okay, so what are we doing in that program, that outreach program? What's it for?
In Love Outreach, it's a rental price effect.
I, I can speak to this, and Ms. Kate is confused.
No, I'm not confused.
So this is from earlier, last year, a member of council agent talked about us leasing their building on Austin Street. So what we said, they, what we came up with is that one half would be used by Second Harvest, so they could distribute food once a week instead of once a month. That's with, that's through, um, Mr. Tyler's. The other half is gonna be like closed spots slash computer lab where people would come, if you need resumes, if you need, basically a place you can come and get put on their feet, they'll have resources for you to do so. So it's kind of like a social services hub to be utilized in Popus and the Terrace because those are our two neighborhoods with the most need at the moment.
So we're getting grants for all that?
No, they are gonna run it for a cost to the city, but in order for them to occupy the building, we states that we have requested from the council agent that they're added as a service. So that's all it is. Second Harvest has been there for months now, this is just added, Love Outreach, so that they can start on their computer lab and life.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I have a favor. On the issue like that, to the city attorney, couldn't that just the city own it? The city doesn't own the building.
Uh, yes, I do have council discussion once again. This is a lease between the city of Bublusa, and what I have is a rental price, and their attorney has indicated that Second Harvest could be used as well within that building. And no confusion, but in actuality, started last year with United Way. United Way was going to go into the building and the lease, there was some confusion on the lease presented by the city. So it had been reconstructed and rechanged, and I was contacted again about what was going on with it. And I informed Mayor Tron that he did indicate for me to go ahead and, and follow up on it and ask me if I would use, because it was in my, in my district. And I must say again, after speaking with attorney Chuck Hughes today, he did want me to reiterate that anyone that goes into the building has to have that liability insurance. Now, I was not aware that Second Harvest had been in the building, and I'm not sure if Councilman Reagan is aware of this well, but I know they wanted to be in the building and it's packed with something they represented for the building.
Gerald Smith, one five zero five four hundred and seventy-five, Bublusa. Haven't been in government for a long time, sir. We're on, we're on council discussion, Black and Asher. Oh, I thought you was calling me. No, I'm, I'm sorry. The, the, we're in council discussion, sir. Any other council discussion? There being, so, so, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Robin.
Uh.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys.
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple.
Aye.
President Kelly.
Aye. Next, the ordinance to be introduced by Councilwoman Kate.
An ordinance to repeal an amendment. An ordinance to appeal an amendment by Mayor Tron to the council agenda as it relates to the introduction of the city of Bublusa water bill ordinance to otherwise provide due respect thereto, thereto. Okay, with this particular, uh, ordinance, there was an amendment of the ordinance, and at that time, there was one name, and when you do an amendment to an ordinance, you have to have a unanimous vote of two-thirds of the council. It's not a majority vote, it's unanimous vote. So with that being said, like repeal that, and then afterward, we would like to, I would like to introduce the actual ordinance. But this is about the vote itself that was, that was given, and it was amendment to the vote, to the, to the ordinance, but we did not get a clear vote on it, we didn't get a, a majority vote on it.
Mr. President, no actions required unless you all did not take a vote on that amendment. Once you all passed the amendment, you did the vote on the ordinance that came from it, so no laws have been violated. I ask that we just move to the next ordinance, there's no action that needs to be taken at this time.
I'll read the title of this. Okay. The city of Bublusa will appeal to minute based bones and legislative officers open meeting law, section sixteen, forty-two nineteen, to add items to the agenda at the meeting itself. The open meeting law requires unanimous approval of the members present to add an item in the agenda. In no case may public body, in no case may public body by ordinance charter provision or policy lessen this requirement to a majority vote. So this is based on, let's say, officers, open meeting law, section sixteen, revised statute forty-two nineteen. It has to be a unanimous vote and not a majority vote. Also, Bones of City Charter indicates section one dash two, effect of appeal of an ordinance. The repeal of an ordinance shall not review any ordinance enforced before or at the time, before or at the time of the ordinance repeal took place. The repeal of an ordinance shall not review any ordinance enforced before or at any time the ordinance repeal took effect. Any motion for a vote to add any item to the agenda shall include with reasonable specificity, no, specificity, the subject matter of the additional agenda item. And the purpose of adding the item to the agenda, public comment on the motion must be allowed prior to any vote, to the, to add items to the agenda. That's revised statute fourteen nine-two, so we're getting the law based, which includes the agenda prior to the vote, any vote of a public body on the motion to take on a matter, not on the agenda. There must be opportunity for public comment votes to be followed. Point being, it has, it has to be a, a vote, not a majority vote, but a unanimous vote. And we got, unanimous is all votes. So we had one vote that was named, which was.
President Kelly.
He voted that. So that's why this is repeal, and we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna re-read the ordinance presented tonight.
Do we have a motion on the appeal?
Motion.
Second. Second. Any further discussion on the appeal motion, ordinance?
Amendment to the order, right?
No, it was an amendment to the agenda.
Okay, it was.
At that time.
It was amendment to the agenda.
Correct.
So you rescinded amendment.
Right.
So you rescinded order.
Right.
You attempted amended order, right?
No, we not amended order, it was just an amendment because we didn't have.
But you were adding the order to the agenda.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, in your opinion, was that correct?
Richard Corset, seven sixty-four, Michael Richardson Road. The reason why we're up here now is because, can you tell us that name that night? Can you, can we ask you why you did?
I wasn't fault.
What was your reasoning for it?
I didn't have one.
You didn't have one, so you just added the name and appear for nothing?
No.
I figured I'd check you doing that.
Yeah.
You have a question for the public? There being none of the council discussion, which matters?
Again, to the council, there's nothing to repeal, the agenda set forth before us isn't even amended with the amendment that I made. We had, let Ms. Kate present her amendment, I mean, let Ms. Kate present her ordinance on water bill payment plans, we are going in circles for no reason here. And that's why I'm saying that some, that's why I'm stating that some people are confused. Let's just. Mr. Mayor, sir, I don't know the confusion where it's coming from, sir, I really don't. That was a, that was an amendment to the agenda, you know, it, I don't know what it was, or how it was. It was a couple meetings ago, anyway, when they went to the, to amend the agenda, we had to have a motion, we made the motion, it failed. It has to have a hundred percent vote on the amendment, amended, it didn't have a hundred percent. So therefore, the amendment should have failed. It didn't fail, they went, it did fail, but they showed it had passed. Now we had to repeal that amendment, and that's what we're doing now, we repeal the amendment, and then bringing your other ordinance back up, it's following this on the water bill payment plan. That will come after this particular thing. But when you made the amendment on the agenda, you have to have a hundred percent of the , of the form here, vote on the amendment. Right, and nobody, right, and I'm not contesting that, what I'm stating is, you all can't even give me the amendment that I made because it's not on here, that's what I'm saying, we're wasting time, move fast, if we're no longer on the amendment. Voting Councilwoman Kate's water bill payment plan, all of this goes away. She is wasting time tonight. We have more important things to be discussing, but we're.
Thank you, sir. You do me a favor. It's on the bottom of the repeal, and we'll get on to the next order. Roll call, please.
Vice President Robin.
Uh.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys.
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple.
Aye.
President Kelly.
No. Next, we have an ordinance to be reviewed by Councilwoman Kate on the government water bill payment.
An ordinance for the city of Bublusa customer water bill payment plan. Whereas according to the eighteen twenty-three oh twenty-seven, it is believed that in general, these prior opinions currently reflect the law according to any, concerning any reduction of water bill in most situations. As a one-time forgiveness of a high water bill due to a break in the customer's. As a one-time forgiveness of a high water bill due to a break in the customer's side of the meter would not be permitted under Constitution, uh, fourteen, seven fourteen. Whereas the opinion attorney general that the town of Eaton is without authority to forgive, reduce, or otherwise set aside a particular customer water bill absent any error of part of the town, finding the town is forgiven from offering one-time forgiveness. We address your question concerning a payment plan that would allow the customer to pay amount, amount due. Whereas, this has been an agency opinion, uh, position, and Louisiana Constitution, uh, article five, fourteen, requires public bodies to exercise reasonable means to recover debts owed to a public body. See attorney general opinion, uh, thirteen, zero, zero, seven, nine, zero, zero, six, seven, and, and zero, five, two, two, seven. Whereas reasonable means must be determined by the agency seeking to recover funds as a case-by-case basis and on sound business practice. Whereas the method of recovering the debt owed is left to the entity seeking to recover funds. The agency office is of opinion that initiating a payment plan is to discharge the amount owed for water usage and related charges in the instance is acceptable. However, we know that the folly to cook any amount owed under such an agreement could constitute a donation of public property prohibited. And I'm just gonna kind of break it down for another reason law. The agency opinion has, has recently decided upon that the city could come up with a payment plan if there's money owed. Otherwise, if they let that money, uh, just, uh, build up and not paid, it would be considered a donation of public funds. Another way. So that's what we initiated and then, uh, let's see, my head is here. I'm gonna go ahead and go to our particular payment plan, the city of Los Angeles. Okay. Payment plans should be limited to a short period, sixty days, for delinquent amounts as follows. Fifty percent of the delinquent water bill in addition to the current bill should be paid by the tenth of each month. And the remainder of the delinquent bill paid within sixty days. For example, if your bill is seriously delinquent and your bill is not paid, it's subscribed in the aforementioned, your services will be disconnected and charged a fifty dollars reconnect fee. If disconnected, total bill owed reconnect fee will be, will need to be paid prior to the reconnect. If a technician is called after hours, the fee will be one hundred dollars. So that's primarily the, the payment plan itself, uh, on a straightest. Ms. Shan, you're not here.
Ms. Shan, would you like to speak on that payment plan now?
Shan, I see the clerk. What's, this clerk, I mean, this case is referenced to if your bill is, for instance, five hundred dollars. So fifty percent of that will be two fifty plus your current bill, or basic bill, I'm just trying to say, fifty-four fourteen will be paid. Okay, I make arrangements with you with that. Coming on the tenth of the next month, you will pay your current bill plus the balance within sixty days. So I'll give you two months. You can pay your current bill and pay on it. But the sixty days, after the sixty days, your bill has to be current or you will be cut off.
Now, if there's any say in making a motion, I make a motion. It's just a motion, uh, public, this case.
We got a motion, second. You got a motion? Second. We have a motion, second. Hold on, we're just ready to get out the water payment. We're in public discussion. Mr. Black, please.
Governor Bob, four fourteen, City Attorney. Um, I'm just getting worried about situations like the last couple of days where you have a water bill and you didn't tell us, you end up with a huge bill and it may not be possible to catch that rhythm sixty days depending on how you tell us, you know? Seems like we, I would like to see some kind of special circumstances for extraordinary weather situations or boiling types or whatever and not just getting through the bill. And, um, so I would really like you guys to consider that, that maybe we have a separate situation for one-time extraordinary expenses and a lot of bills opposed to just not paying the bill. And I'd like y'all to consider this point forward. Thank you.
All right, put it back on that, please. That's a different situation, which is fine, that's an emergency and you can't help that. So you can come and talk to me and we'll take care of that like that. Okay?
Thank you.
Richard Corset, seven sixty-four, Marshall Richardson wrote, did I hear right that, uh, you're all gonna be open twenty-four hours a day and turn water off and on? For a hundred fifty dollars?
Well, I say if there's a technician, uh, if a technician is called after hours, the fee is a hundred dollars. So those, those, those hours will have to be determined by public works, those after, after hours. I mean, how long within?
You think Mayor will need to be working at that nighttime doing that?
I, I don't believe so, but also I think we should consider, it should only be what it costs the city to come in. It shouldn't be a hundred dollars, so, I mean, can you give us some rationale as to why you chose a hundred dollars?
Ms. Case?
No, I'm referring to Ms. Haynes, Mayor.
You offered to work with Ms. Case.
I would like to call Ms. Haynes.
Uh, is there a particular reason why the hundred dollars?
I, I presume it's because overtime is involved.
That's correct. The overtime you are paying, uh, the plumber to come out, that's just overtime pay. So the city would have to pay this if you really, you reimbursing the city for them to come out.
I don't really think any of our city workers should go out there at night and even turn water on at night if you don't care about paying your bill on time. I think they should stay home till the next morning.
Well, that's optional.
But I mean, that's what I feel as though, Mayor, I don't think they need to be going out there because they never know what kind of trouble they're rich in or who's waiting for. So that's why I say that and that's why I care because doing something at night, if I don't pay my bill and Florida, it, that would be four nighttime, they're not coming out. Six o'clock, that's it, you're cut off, Doc. It's over. That's it. So I think we should think about six o'clock at night or whatever it is, your hours are cut off after that. There's no overtime to that. Thank you.
Marvin, also, seven thirty-six, Marvin, I think we've heard that. I'd, I'd like to know, uh, before we came out of the conference, I'd like to know if we will discuss with the administration, because how, how is it gonna affect the budget? Uh, we have our roles, our roles in the legislature coming out. The mayor's role as their minister, he said, he deals with the budget that you give out. Now, how will this affect that budget? I know, I'm not a real person. I know I feel the type too, I'm gonna be gonna watch you. But, uh, you know, I think it probably should have been discussed within the time, uh, periods that's allowed because it can affect the way things run in the city financially.
I'd like to respond to this officer, uh, here, I assume that the rank, it should have been, it, it, it's to be discussed with, uh, the administration, which I did discuss in link with the entity that's responsible for the water bill, public works, uh, our city clerk, Ms. Haynes, in detail. It was discussed, uh, how this affected our budget, uh, this is, this is the law that the agency has passed, where it, it was that no, no water plant was in place. We tried back in two thousand seventeen to get a water plant. I don't know if you remember this, this, uh, crisis. She came forth about that, about the water bill plan. Check, minutes. We tried, we did an agency opinion and they wrote us back saying, no, there's no water plant. But recently, as I indicated back in March of, uh, this year, agency opinion decided to go ahead and, and, and allot a water plant because those, those, uh, those dollars, those debt dollars need to be paid back to the dismount. And if it being paid back, that will not allow a donation of, individual, to make that person accountable for that water bill versus just no payment at all, which will be a donation, considered a donation. And public law does not allow donations for the dismount.
Any other discussion for the public? Are there any others in the press, council discussion? Any other other discussion? Vote or no vote, Cal, please.
Vice President Urban?
Ah.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kay?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Test your voice. Mr. Sanders. This and tomorrow is the bad reason.
An ordinance authorizing mayor of the city of Los Angeles to enter into and change governmental agreement between the city of Los Angeles and Washington Parish government for use of equipment and other matters per the agreement attached from two thousand twenty-four. This is a agreement between the parish and the city.
Is there any, excuse me, just a motion on the ordinance? Thank you, sir. That person. Any other discussion, we'll start with this way, do you?
Richard Corset, seven sixty-four, Marshall Richardson wrote, Mayor, um, I'd like to ask you, do we have any of that going on right now with Washington Parish?
Yes, sir, we do. On some of those recent, uh, church shoot, so basically what this does is allow us to provide, um, the asphalt in the parish basically pays the road free of charge.
Okay, this is like what we're getting done in the parks here, is it?
Right.
Okay, all right. So then everything's free at church, most of it?
Yes, sir.
Other than doing some?
Probably plumbing or whatever we need to do.
Right, but we will still be loyal.
Right, we will still have to, um, let them take that service. So basically, we just provide asphalt and they pay the road. It's the same agreement that they have with, um, other dismounts throughout the country.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Any other public discussion, any other public discussion, any council discussion, Mr. Bolton? Any other council discussion, vote or no vote, vote or no vote.
Councilwoman Urban?
Ah.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Next ordinance is a, is a, is a, is a, by myself, it's an ordinance that the Los Angeles Airport Animal Protection. It, uh, it's actually a, it's an ordinance that, uh, city of Los Angeles recognizes and be sure to say and secure the city, cities airport facilities and consideration of federal aviation administration regulations and guidelines. This ordinance has been acted to prohibit the presence of animals at the Los Angeles City Airport with the exception of service animals in order to maintain and safe and secure environment. Sort of, uh, service animals, uh, individual animals and within a minimum visibility, which I'm pretty sure Mayor and Senator know about that. No person shall bring or allow cause any animal to be, or be present in batteries of the, a city airport, public city airport. Need a different provision if it be offered up to cover. Uh, airport security personnel, I'm not familiar with, airport security personnel authorized the airport, the ordinance and may request individual community of food and water for the airport presence violation and ordinance and may resort to penalties and outline the city general penalty provision.
Do we have a motion on this ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Public discussion on this matter?
We'd like to hear from some of the pilots, too. I know y'all want to be part of this.
Yeah.
I'm Jay Lewis, uh, live in seven, seven, zero, six, five, highway twenty-one, who is actually in Covington. Uh, I am pilot, I do have a graph at Los Angeles Airport, have for about eleven years. Um, one thing, without rereading the entire ordinance, there is a misstatement in the ordinance regarding in consideration of federal aviation administration regulation, there is no federal aviation administration regulation against animals on airport. The only thing the federal aviation administration says is you will control wildlife. What this ordinance specifically does is tell us that we have to control wildlife, which we've been asking for that to happen for years, we as pilots. I myself have had to go around trying to land at night because deer on the runway. I've had the porpoise of tires. It's a serious matter. It, it's a life matter. The only way we're gonna control that is put up a perimeter defense. I had no other answer. I don't know. If somebody else has an idea, hey, I have to do it, I wanna hear it, but right now, the only thing I can think of is put up a perimeter defense. Now, further, you mentioned about the service animals. Um, the, the FAA does address service animals at airports. They do highly recommend that you follow, it was, uh, advisory circular one fifty dash five two hundred. And that is about building a SAR, which is a service animal relief area. That's an area that is constructed on the airport, serviced by airport personnel, is protected from the wind, is protected from the sun, is protected from precipitation. It is protected from the wind, it is protected from the sun, it is protected from precipitation. Uh, and it's an area that a handicapped person with a service animal can let that service animal relieve itself. Um, so if you're going to get into the, into the particulars on service animals, you need to look at having that constructed. Finally, I work with the, I, no, I volunteer with the North Shore Humane Society and all of that. I've been doing that ever since I've lived on the North Shore. I love it. It has been educational, it has been heartwarming, it's also been heartbreaking. Further, I use my airplane in something called Pilots and Paws, which is an international organization. We're in Mexico, U.S., and Canada, and we fly dogs from one rescue organization to a person that is rescuing them or, um, adopt them uh, out of state, sometimes plumb across the country. The furthest I've flown is from Bogalusa to Roanoke, Virginia, just to get two dogs. Also, we fly dogs, uh, I've met pilots with Pilots and Paws flying from Jacksonville going to Tucson. Met them here at the airport, fueled their plane, even a lot of times it's a relay and they'll transfer off to another plane itself. One of the keys to keep in mind about this is that we use these airports, most of the time, um, and I'm not asking this from Bogalusa, but most of the time I am granted a special price on fueling because it's a charity work that we're doing. All of these, all of our, uh, pilots with Pilots and Paws carry a card showing that we're, uh, members. And we show that to the various airport managers and we're granted a special price on fueling. The other thing that Pilots and Paws does, and this is not as regular as, well, flying animals for adoption. But if an animal needs very specialized medical care, they fly to the closest airport. We have research ma, uh, veterinary medical hospital in Covington. Bogalusa is the closest airport to that that has instrument services. In other words, we can fly in in any kind of weather. Uh, there are airports that are closer, but they don't have the instrument services. And I know in the time that I've been with Bogalusa, I have probably flown, uh, for both Pilots and Paws and for research and for the Humane Society, I've probably flown forty to fifty animals in and out of Bogalusa. I would really, really hate to see that go. And finally, I would like to comment that you have this recording studio, and I know this seems off track. You have this recording studio out here. I have yet to see somebody come in here and record that studio, go into this airport without an animal in tow. And I would like to see who on this council is going to call these stars and tell them, you can't come here, you've got it now. And that's all I've got to say on that. Thank you.
I'd like to say, um, that this is not what this ordinance is about. What, the situation that we have out of the airport is that we have someone living at the airport in a hangar. They have their dogs out there. Um, their dogs are attacking neighbors' dogs. And our coast enforcement officer and animal control officer keep having to go out there. We spoke with the FDA, um, the airport manager was in that meeting. They have never heard of dogs living on premises of an airport. So we can twist it and turn it and make it into Hollywood all we want, but the point is simple. Let's, let's make an amendment to provide for people who are in transit, they can bring their dogs. And I just don't think dogs should be ridden at the airport. And that's what this ordinance is about here.
Any more public discussion?
Richard Corset, seven seventy-four, Marshall Richardson Road. I just, I didn't know that. And I was going to say, come up here and just say, oh, we got a sign on the fence, you know, if no dogs alive. But as far as what he said, it's even more important than I heard. But mayor, I don't blame it. You need to get him out of there. Thank you.
The wording of this ordinance, it says no animals, period. It doesn't say no permanent resident animals. It says no animals. And that's why I'm making a point that if we're going to do that, we need a perimeter fence and we need to make an exception for those of us that use the airport for rescues and for medical reasons, veterinary medical reasons, that. Thank you.
Any public discussion from the public? Or any other, any council discussion?
Do I have a motion for me, this agenda? From simple fact is, uh, like Mr. Jay said, they have charity work, they have, if they have to, uh, if he goes somewhere and pick up a dog to bring back, the connecting flight is here. If we restrict animals from the airport, he cannot make his connecting flight here. So, I mean, we can come with some rules and regulations to say that animals can still come to our airport here. So I'm amending this agenda to say that, uh,
I think you should write it as can't, a dog can't take up permanent residence at the airport. I think that would, that would be more right. That would get clarity to this.
I, I disagree. I think you should clarify that this does not include animals, um, in transit, um, as well as animals involved in, as, as well as pilots involved in charity work. Because if you say, um, permanent residence, that still doesn't give our coast enforcement officer, our animal control officer, the right to go grab a dog that has been there permanently. Because now you're arguing, what is the definition of permanent residence in court?
We're not talking permanent residence. I'm talking to if they have, you know, a connecting flight that, that can.
Right, so, right, we're, we're, we're in agreement. So I'm saying, I think it should be, we should clarify that they have to be in flight, like, moving from one place to another.
So, uh, whatever, I mean, the, uh, the, the, and, um, the exceptions. Tracing, yeah. Right, and you serve down, you can add, uh, in transit for the charity work, as well as, uh, medical, uh,
Can I make one final point? Are you aware that we already have an ordinance about animals at the airport, um, nineteen fifty-five ordinance, file four? Shall be unlawful for any owner or keeper of an animal to allow such animal to run at large on the Georgia R. Car Memorial Airport or Bogalusa Industrial Park. Any animals found at large in or on such property shall be taken up and impounded by the police department or anyone whom the department may employ for that purpose.
So let's just go with all of that here at once.
We are approved, public discussion, early.
So, um, the exception part? Yeah, animals in transit. Charity. For the purposes of charity, uh, transport, the other was for medical, uh, necessity. The man wanted to address the, uh, stores that were being shared animals, so maybe he could help us there about, uh, the, uh, allowing people to get their, get the animals in transit.
Yeah, I haven't known that. They dropped some money, but I see.
So we highlight everything under the exceptions. We're proposing to add, um, in transit, transport, for the benefit of, of charities, limited matters. Medical emergencies. And animals that are in transit.
Okay, section four, exceptions, uh, animals in transit, alcohol, charity, or medical transit, uh, emergency candles.
Section four, yeah, all right. Without a amendment, before the captain, do you have a motion or do you have a amendment to the ordinance? Second, you have a second? Motion number second. Yeah, this is for him, yeah. Any other public discussion on this matter? And not being discussing, public council discussion on this matter? Any more discussion on this matter? Go ahead, go ahead, please.
Councilwoman Urban?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kent?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys? Aye. Councilwoman Temple? Aye. President Jones?
Aye.
Okay, next up, we have an ordinance for the city of Bogalusa Airport.
Point of order, you just voted on the amendment. You have not voted on the ordinance yet.
Please, uh, thank you, please. Thank you, pardon. All right, how many vote on the ordinance? The amendment to the ordinance has voted on the ordinance. We already had public discussion, we had discussion from the council, we have any, from the council discussion?
So we're doing it in reverse order? Thanks for the long remarks. Which one was saying that what passed?
All of them. So you made an amendment to the exception on the fourth, on the paper. That's what we voted on. We made an amendment to section four of the original ordinance.
So we should have voted?
Yeah, we voted on the ordinance.
We should have voted in the favor of the first ordinance.
Exactly, so there's no should, can't, I can do that.
All right.
Okay, since we did it, we got the amendment, like, just go ahead and make voting on the original order, all right, that's it, no matter. And we can vote.
Vice President Urban?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kent?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Aye.
Councilwoman Evans?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
All right, last one, we have four, you guys over here. I got two more. That's when we get three two, we get three two by careful one key.
Okay, it's ours for review of this airport handler occupation. And basically what it is, um, it is prohibiting anyone to occupy and live at the airport hangar. And so the purpose of the fine is say that the city council votes to recognize the accordance of maintaining the safety and security and proper use of airport facilities in accordance with the federal aviation and transportation regulations. This ordinance is acted to prohibit individuals from diving in and yours on the city of Bogalusa airport property insurance, insurance clients with getting any rules and safeguarding the integrity of airport operations.
Thank you, ma'am. We have enough, enough of the ordinance, we can all.
Any motion?
Yes, second.
Second.
Motion, second, is there any public discussion?
Jay Lewis, this is seven seven zero six five, I wait for the public to scan them. Not a citizen of Bogalusa, I have an anger at the Bogalusa Airport. Couple things stand out with this ordinance. Last meeting I was at, here, I guess it was December eighteenth, we talked about having educational opportunities for children in Bogalusa. The way I'm reading this ordinance, the way it's written right now, that prohibits that. It says for the maintenance and storage of aircraft, period. It does not allow that. Think we need to rethink how we work this ordinance. Uh, and also, you know, there's so many things we can use this airport for in the future. You're putting it to be just strictly stored airplane, work order is necessary. What about, um, a parachuting team wants to come in here? They're not allowed, not whether this ordinance. That's not, that's not maintenance of an aircraft.
I disagree, um, if we do start flight school, it'll be held in the main building, which technically a hangar. It's a, it's an office building, it's an administrative space, so that does not come back as... Basically, we have someone living out at the airport in a hangar, um, and to make matters worse, our courtesy car was wrecked by this person's son, so it's happened last in a vacation. You should not be able to live out at the airport, that's not what that facility is for.
That person, such brought that up, Mr. Mayor, that person living out of the airport is the sole person left of that. Everybody else has been to leave, he's the sole person left that is allowed to fuel an airplane, knows how to receive fuel at the airport, can actually perform minor maintenance on airplanes. He is the only one left. He has been doing that for as long as I've been here, ten, eleven years, as long before that. He's doing it out of kindness of his heart, he has no compensation whatsoever. And, you know, you're trying to get rid of that. That's just going to be another financial burden on the cities of Bogalusa to replace him with somebody that's competent. Who are you going to call at two o'clock in the morning to fuel a jet that comes in here and needs fuel?
The jets weren't in to fuel, that's why the previous document was released by the judge. I mean, we can make this into, you know, times past and, you know, this is how we've always done it. The point is, you should not be living at the airport.
The FAA does make a specific exception for airport maintenance personnel and airport managers to live at the airport. That is very specific in the federal aviation regulations.
Yes, sir, we even follow that, this person is not airport personnel or the airport manager.
He has been in that role forever, he has filed documents for that airport in the past and will continue to help in that now.
Yes, sir, I think he does basically explain my point, he has done it in the past, he is no longer doing it. So therefore, I don't believe that somebody should be living out in a hangar at the airport.
Let's ask you, I have a question, sir, could you repeat again the task that this individual was, uh, doing at the airport?
Anything, anything that was required. If a plane came in after hours, he would greet that plane and fuel that plane. Um, he would, on more than one occasion, somebody comes in with a broken belt on an airplane, he'd help them replace the belt, fix a flat tire, replace headlights, or as we call it in aviation world, landing lights. Um, he was receiving fuel at the airport. Uh, he was the only one that could properly fuel a jet out there. The, uh, the fuel truck's gone, so as far as fueling jets, I guess that's no longer going to happen at the airport. But it's gone. It needs to be replaced, and we're going to have to see jets out there again, because that was the only way of dispensing, uh, fuel into the, uh, the jet fuelers and jets. That's another major expense gone, that's about two hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, cheapest one you're going to find.
There also, we have ten, um, one five zero five, we have a ten seven five Bogalusa. Also a pilot, uh, when you start looking at exceptional things, you start getting into problems. So standard ways that airports run, that's the way we should run. I don't think this guy is contractually obligated to do any of the stuff aforementioned. So it's really just a, you know, good old boy system that we're currently under. So I'm, I'm in full support of this amendment to where we do things the right way, not that, you know, I'm doing this guy a favor, okay? That would be a trouble.
So, this is my question, you're saying, well, as I mentioned, it's not a necessity for our airport at all?
It's a nicety, it's not a necessity. It's nice, having, you know, Ben, I'll fly in next month, volunteer and come up and change the light bulb, but, uh, it's not, he's not doing that under a contract, he's doing that because he's living there and having the goodness of his heart. So unless there's some contractual items that are specified on what this guy will do, not on a volunteer basis, but this is what he will do, if he's allowed to live out there, then I think we need to not look together out there and whatever it takes in this ordinance. But also, I think rather look at other cities and how the, or, this ain't the first airport that's ran by a city. So some standards, ver- privilege, some standard contracts, whatever it takes, but all this exceptional stuff needs to go away.
Good evening, my name is John O'Reilly, eight two sixty seventh street, Bogalusa, Louisiana. I just want to ask this question, like, um, this guy that's out there, that's going on there at the airport, is it required to do the maintenance on the, uh, what he's doing? He has to be licensed to do it?
Yes, sir. It has to be a certified candidate.
So is he a certified candidate or something? Okay, so he's just exchanging doing the job to, um, for pleasure to stay? Okay, that's, that's fine, or will he license to do it?
This, without anybody being up there, the city would have to hire somebody. In addition to the benefits and all that what they get at the city of Bogalusa. So without anybody being up there, this guy's pumping gas and checking the gas daily. So there are federal regulations regulating that. Uh, so once he's out of the picture, they're, they're going, they're going to have to, once again, and I know y'all don't like it when something comes up, that, that takes away money from street payments.
No, I'm asking, with him doing all that, will he license, you know, like?
Oh, sir, no, sir, what takes away money is trying to hire a dish on a turn. Yes, and with that, this is not taking away money. This is the fact that this guy should not be living in an airport hangar on airport facility property. Nothing more, nothing less, y'all can come up here and, and prescribe pleasantries about, oh, he's changing tires and changing belts. Y'all, there is no contract before the city that's requiring this man to do that. So therefore, when it comes to the FAA, we don't have an official to do it right now. We don't, we don't have an official to do it right now, so what, so what's the difference?
Walking on himself, thirty-six, I want the mayor, I want the staff on this. Because if they're doing maintenance outside there, and the maintenance is gone, and they're out there losing, and Godspeed at that airport practice. And their work has been done at that facility out there. The city will find itself liable for a lot of enjoying.
Thank for nineteen thirty-one to be replaced. This time Bogalusa stopped living in the past. Move to the future. As I spoke to Ted a few weeks ago, Bogalusa's seventy-five year behind hand. Seems like you all, it's kind of me iterating in your thinking for the future. Tell it to the future, yeah, you all behind, you, but that was behind.
Oh, don't point your finger at me.
You were behind this case.
Please, Mister Fair, not point your finger at me. Don't do that. I ain't done nothing to you. Mister Fair. Well, you shouldn't point your finger at me, that's rude.
That was for standing seven six four Marshall Richardson Road. Um, I just wanted to say, if this man is certified to do that job, and he's been doing it for a long time, it, it's been said that he has no contract to do it, and he's living out there because he's getting no money. Why don't we have a contract with them that pay him as an independent contractor, so where he can afford to rent the house? And that way, you don't have to hire a new person, and you don't have him living at the hangar.
Thank you, Brown, here.
Thomas Tyson, fourteen ten, Backstreet. I understand that, uh, you're saying he's doing the work there free. So a person coming there with a plane, who's the worker on the plane? He's doing it free, or he's getting paid from the people that got the plane? Because to me, they like working on a plane, a college. You know? Fixing tires, I mean, yeah. I call him, get a whole plane, then fix it up or something. It's free. So to me, I think that, uh, like, time to pass, it's no more that good old boy, time pass, instead of future now. That mom and pop store is gone. But this is all them here now.
Any lots of parts, any lots of parts on the floor?
Any wire?
I know, I'm a person of Louisiana, of Ross City.
Nathan Andrews.
And I don't know if I'd be wrong to speak, that's all.
Yes. I think that's Nathan Andrews.
Yeah, I just hear Nathan Andrews.
Back on you, seventy-two Francis Perd Road, Carrer, Mississippi. And all I want to say is, I know the city of Bogalusa is a tough financial spot right now, I can understand that. Um, the airport, we've got a manager out there who wears no hats. And you can't have somebody out there twenty-four hours a day if anything happens. This gentleman is out there twenty-four hours a day. And, uh, I think, a lot of times, I've been working on an airplane, go home and forgot, and then turn the handle lights off. Off, yeah, I drove back out there and physically apart again, he will investigate, oh, you, I thought I forgot to turn the handle lights off. And, uh, from a security point, all I'm saying is that you have one person who is out there all the time. If anything happens, if anything happens, we have somebody up there. Just, just in the last, just in the last, up there, there's somebody there, anything happens, bar match, like, or something like that, that's all. I'm just wondering, yeah, if you have somebody out there, I understand a lot of the regulations and things like that, but, um, from a security point of view, you've got to actually say, that's all, thank you for your time.
We're going to include participation. We're going to include the public participation in this matter, I'm going to make a motion myself at this time. If we table this matter until February the sixth, at which time we'll have time to get with the FFA administration and find out what the town, what the airport, the Bogalusa. We have a motion to the second, table this until February the sixth.
With all due respect, you all have had a sense of the year of December. This, this was, this was first proposed to the council beginning of December. You haven't had over a month, a month and a half at this point, six weeks to review this.
Yes, we haven't. We have. Like I said, when I made the motion, it got seconded, we're going to ask for a vote, if that's going to fail, I don't know. But I'm asking you to give me a little legality on that one.
Urban?
Aye.
Chairman Johnson?
Chairman Smith? Aye.
Chairman Kate?
My question, I know we have a session. My question is that this person has been in the, uh, at the airport. He's been, uh, there providing a service, but he's been providing a service that had needed, he may have been needed, but had been authorized. Uh, I, I do, I do, uh, uh, vote to table this, because if we can get some contracts, somebody has suggested, if we did contracts, no, and I think what they're hoping to have was to go. But we should have one up there, if they're not authorized to be up there, and, uh, it might be one of them. Come here. Aye, vote to the second.
Aye. Chairman Temple?
Aye.
President Hill?
President, if I may speak, um, and the reason why, if someone come back to ask me why I voted nay, I did provide, um, the council a copy of the regulations, um, according to the law, that no one is supposed to live in a hangar.
Understood, so, so. Next, we have. Next, we have, uh. Orders, we have a decision by Councilwoman Schmidt.
An art commission in section twenty-one dash eight three zoning code setting a minimum square footage. An ordinance amendment, section twenty-one dash eighty-three zoning code setting a minimum square footage, a requirement of all resident homes within a city of Bogalusa. Just a little bit more clarification, um, we are going to amend this zoning code twenty-one dash eighty-three that all homes must have a minimum square foot, or eight hundred square foot, for all resident homes within the city of Bogalusa.
Are there any public discussion on this matter? About the zoning code setting a minimum square footage? No public discussion, are there any, have some discussion on this matter?
Uh, yes, I do have a council discussion, um, it was brought to my attention, and I heard you discuss with, uh, Councilwoman Smith, that planning and zoning, uh, would like an opportunity to, uh, assess the tiny houses, and that's just under consideration.
Yes, ma'am, she, um, yes, Councilwoman Dick Kate did, um, institute that to me. However, we did go back and forth, I spoke to Randy Jones. Um, this has been a ongoing, um, occurring situation from a gentleman that went by doing things the wrong way. He did go before, um, the planning and zoning board that, um, basically at that time told them they have, they did not know enough knowledge about, um, the small houses, because the gentleman went back and corrected his language to make it a small house. And, um, you know, not to just bring up the past and go back to what Mister Pete Fair said, if we're trying to beautify a city, we shouldn't be putting, um, sheds on the main highway that risks missing business to flood. So with all due respect to everyone who serves as a volunteer, and thank y'all so much for planning and zoning, because it is a free board, and they do come, and they meet frequently, and I think it relates one of those persons who served on that board. But, um, with all due consideration, I ask that the, um, council would go forth, because, um, we can't continue to go back and forth, with people just wanting to... However, I know Selma was, um, Mister Rafer came years ago to try to do the same thing, and he was told no. So, um, with all due respect, I just ask that we be able to, um, move forward with this one.
I do understand that, because as a cohort of Bogalusa ordinance, uh, we do not, at this time, we do not hear anything in place for our mutations, and our next, uh, project would be to discuss the facades. We can't tell everybody that's, um, is tempted, okay, that they have a lovely house, but we can, we can wipe rules, uh, put facades into place. So now, you know, we did go back and forth on the footage, and, uh, that's where we, we didn't come, come up with it on our own. We did have expert, uh, with us at the time to come up with this particular, uh, ordinance, so I hope.
I'm going here, Jeff, ladies, also, you need to, I'm looking at this, I was on planes all the time, and you also need to make sure that, uh, a building over, under certain square footage needs to have tie rails, because in a hurricane, that's going to be a rollover car crash, and it will kill a occupant instantly. So if they're living in one of these, uh, what we call portable buildings, or tiny homes, and that's the rate we're dropping now. Uh, so in the instant, uh, I think some reasonable efforts needs to be done, tie rails can be done, and I understand where you're getting eight hundred square feet, and for the public to understand that, sixteen foot wide, it's about fifty foot long.
That may interrupt you for a second, before we get on the public, you can give a motion, you can give a second. Some more discussion on the public. Make a second. So now, pause for a second. Is there any public discussion on the matter that you just rejected on this ordinance?
Why don't I, eight two sixty seventh street, Bogalusa, Louisiana. So I'm going to question that I have, because you see, I'm not sure y'all see the tiny homes and everything that's being built and stuff. So is that the, um, size, the eight hundred square foot for?
The minimum.
The minimum? Okay, so, it's some tiny homes, the smaller, and that's why we're so anxious. So it's got to be for, um, here in Bogalusa, eight hundred square foot?
Yes, we're looking, we're putting, um, what we're doing is putting something on the books. Now, those who haven't before, well, yes, they will be, and I'm not going to lose the time, yes, that's all. They will be grandfathered in, but for the safety, as Councilman Urban said, like, if a tornado come through, we need to call the experts. It was the main concern, would it be able to lift and twirl and cause an accident?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And also, also, this is my, uh, accord to, um... And also, also, this is why they accord to, um, some of the footage. And the data as I received from parish nationality, the tiny houses can be as small as four hundred square feet. But we, uh, after speaking with the e- expert on, uh, formulating this ordinance, it was suggested eight hundred square.
John McManus, two of two Bourbon Street. Oh. I honestly don't think that the council should be making any ordinances dictating what the square footage of anybody's house should be. Especially in the current economic state that we're in as a country. Within twenty years, we have seen housing prices go from twenty to eighty thousand dollars a home. To one, four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars for a single family home. I understand if you want to control life, there's ways to do it. There's already stuff on the books about portable buildings, about, uh, trailers and things that have actually been brought in this focus. I think dictating the square footage of somebody's house, regardless of how nice it may be or not. Is a gross overreach of governmental power. And I believe that it is insensitive to those of an upcoming generation who are facing economic problems. So I would ask that you either vote no or table it.
I'd just like to say, brother Richard. Planning and zoning formally voted asking you all to table. I mean, clearly we don't have a problem with table things. Um, so I think, I think this should, I think this should be a town hall discussion on what we want to see from housing in Bogalusa. Because based on this, it's also unclear whether you all are allowing, um, because residential home, you can argue that. That, that includes apartment buildings. All apartments aren't going to be eight hundred square feet. And, and that further, that further, um, deters development in our city. It's already hard enough, and this is adding something more. This is similar to the approach that was taken, um, when the methadone clinic came here. We scrambled and scrambled, well, not we, because I wasn't up here, but we scrambled, um, as a government to try to react. If you're going to react to a shed being on side of the highway, this is not the way to do it. I think this needs more thought, it, it just comes off the cap.
Thank you. Um, Rich Corset, seven-six-four Marshall Street, Grove. I think the mayor is right about that, and the other thing is that, um. The way to think about it is, are these going to be homes that we ever put on these properties? That are like something we can buy down the street and it's already built? That's a shed. Like, and are we going to have, I have a lot that I'd love to put a twenty-five by fifty on it. But can I put aluminum building on it? That's the thing, are you going to let my structure be aluminum? That's the thing, or you're going to make me get wood, and build it like that, or bricks? See, well, portable homes, can I put it on my lot down the street on, uh, Roscoe? You know, I got a slab right there, ready to go.
You're allowed, man, if I draw a square, I can see it.
In Bogalusa.
Yes, you are.
Okay. Okay, no local homes though, I know that. Okay. Okay. I understand that, and the other thing is, is I really think the, the mayor is right, it should be, uh, tabled. Because I think you need to go planning and zoning and check on this, because I know the thing that happened on Sullivan. Was something that was, uh, shouldn't have ever happened like that. And I think if it was more talked about and checked into in pictures of what you were putting on there, that it was pre-built. Not that it was, we thought it was being built right on the property. And, you know, there's a difference between putting the slab first and then putting the, uh, so you have good patterns. So it makes a difference, and the stuff. But I think it needs to go to planning and zoning to check first.
Miss, you say, uh, the planning and zoning, it was initially, um, brought to, kind of, planning and zoning initially. And planning and zoning, uh, suggested that actually they didn't have a place in it. Uh, we were there for it to go to planning and zoning, but at that time, I guess, it should be thought to bring back, uh, planning and zoning. But it was, it was, uh, brought initially, the house, the situation with the house was, um. That house was brought in parts, and it shouldn't have been brought, it was, it was brought in, uh, inappropriately.
Well, it should have been built, not pre-made.
Well, well, if I may, it was brought in parts.
I understand.
And it was understood to be brought to bring in whole according to, uh, the parish, uh, permit, uh, person.
And then I also heard they want another thirty of them, like, so you can have a little go home, a little shed part.
But that's, we do definitely need some of those.
Yes, I understand. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Here's, here's the overarching situation that needs to be done with the, with the tiny homes. AKA portable buildings, people making into tiny homes. What needs to be done is just tie down, they must meet the conditions of neighborhood, it must look like the rest of the neighborhood fit in. Have a little porch, require them to have a porch. You can actually draw any regulations. Most of them, most of the houses that I saw, uh, a lady died in Golden River County, Mississippi. Uh, she took portable buildings, I can't remember the name of the company, we're, we're council. But, but, uh, and you're going to do your thing, but the thing is that I'm just letting you know. That this is what really needs to be looked at. I mean, uh, instead of the square footage, it's more kind of.
Kevin Corset, seven-six-four Marshall Street, Grove. I was actually secretary of planning and zoning when this issue came up. And we advised the man that there was no law or ordinance on the books. That prohibited him from building whatever he wanted on his property. So he was told, you have no business at planning and zoning. There's nothing we can do for you. So he, he had told us that he was going to build the home on the property. Now where the problem initiated was he was given a permit to move the home from Borneo to Bogalusa. He should have never been issued that permit.
Right.
And also, and I called, um, the gentleman that, um, Mr. D Y Dash, later permit. He said that he was under, and Mark and I were together. He said that, um, he was told that he was moving it, but he was not aware that the gentleman was moving it to Bogalusa location. And it was clarification.
Who was under it?
The gentleman who issued, issued the permit at that time.
If they were not moving it to Bogalusa, why would they need Bogalusa permit to move it?
Which would be the Washington Hill or Parish Building that was built, as far as.
Do you want, do you?
Anyway, um, so now it's that one, and I will bring up another one too that occurred under. Thinking of something while I was there. And it is, um, Hasty Name and Age, I don't know what I had to use this time. Um, that sign by Tina Radcliffe on Columbia Streets. That is not the sign that was approved. Um, we approved a two-sided sign that was going to be way up in the air. Not something on one side hanging down obstructing traffic. Um, so I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. And, um, reiterate, we need code enforcement here, um, really bad. Because who's doing anything about this, the sign, um, breaking the rules? You know, it's not the sign that was approved. So I'm not sure who's going to tell her that, but anyway, we need code enforcement.
We add code enforcement. The coroner officer said.
I did a good job of saying these.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh.
Bogalusa, we, man. I think the mayor is right, it's all right. And I deal by, uh, public discussion from the military on this. Housing was a big issue not only in Bogalusa, but across the country. We are a nation of homeless. And I know on the east coast and some places on the west coast, they're building homes for people to live in. And they're not very big homes, but it's big enough for the people to live there and it's comfortable. Bogalusa has lost a lot of population to this. And if we can look at it long term, and make people home, it'll murder a dream. It will also be tax paid. Some of the budgetary problems that we have in our city can be met with more tax payments. So long as, uh, as long as the homes come up to code. Square footage, I don't think we need a, a outdoor. But they usually back in the day without a sign up. But you do need a comfortable home, because they want to be three thousand square feet, eight thousand square feet. And we need to talk about it, I don't think we need to just drop legal or write a statute. Thank you.
This will be our last individual straight to nine, and what's matter?
Please, sir, nineteen thirty-one D. Wick. I went to planning and zoning meeting on that little shack, that's not a house. That's a snowball stand. It's a disgrace. You all, if the people, since the moment you made that snowball stand, you put them so underground. I've been fighting block here for years. And I've been fighting block here, layups off the drive. Then when I saw that snowball stand was coming, I came to the planning and zoning meeting and, and, and grabbed the bag. But what good am I grabbing? It don't do any good in Bogalusa. So it's time for us to get that snowball stand off so underground. I asked tonight, it's a disgrace. You gonna let somebody come in this city that don't even live in the city and mess it up the way it just messed it up? And look at how you tore the street up.
Right.
To put, to look at this plan of it, that costs a lot of money on this city. So it's time for us to let the people run over us in this city. Thank you.
How, how that came to be is because we don't have any. Regulations. We don't have regulations at all, period, on, on these things. Now, Mr. Chels Richardson, uh, previous building official, uh, building inspector. Building Inspector, yes, Mr. E. Williams at Parishville. The building official, we did have, and I seen him when I was in planning and zoning, I don't know what happened to him. But we didn't have regulations about how many square feet to a lot a building can be built. So that's something else that needs to be taken into consideration. It was in a blue binder. So there are a lot of blue binder over there, an administration building, that was Mr. Chels' father, I call it. He flipped through that thing, he bought it quick. So, so a while, so, so a while ago. What really needs to be done, any building, uh, needs to be, uh, needs to look. When you're putting a new building in, needs to meet the conditions of the neighborhood. If you're going to do, uh, building these portable buildings, at least have a front porch or. To make them kind of look, these looking with some kind of shrubbery and landscaping and stuff like that. This was all discussed back in twenty sixteen, this wasn't about that new. There was, there was two operators of portable buildings at the time. And, uh, they were selling these portable buildings at the time back in sixteenth. And these subjects became up, and how they overrode us. And with tax planning and zoning, is because we didn't have the regulations in place for to deal with, uh, uh, portable buildings. Uh, but portable buildings, uh, this raises up another question. Can a shed be used for storage? That's another question I have about this. Uh, now, where's a beautiful action to use a shed, does this prohibit that? Uh, because it just says eight hundred residential square feet, but however, a shed is only in a residential location. Alright, thank you.
It seems that the issue is not about the square footage of a home, but portable buildings being brought in. To, uh, serve as a store for communities and other homes. So, uh, we need to strengthen the standards so that it reflects what, you know, the goal that we're trying to achieve. And not so much the square footage of, of, um.
Absolutely, uh, I, I do agree with that. And not having anything on the books, and as I said earlier, the facade of the house with the pores, the shrubbery, what have we. Perhaps we can combine with this square footage, which we're buying too. But we, we don't have anything, uh.
And we need to get, we need, Councilwoman Kate, we need to get something on the books. So planning and job, coming in their job.
We can discuss that with different. Now, it's, now, you can go ahead now, we can discuss it later.
Yeah, I'd like to make a question, though, table this, it does need to be clarified a lot more, we need to put some thought into it. More specifics, I don't know what to say.
We have a motion.
Say.
Table, we got a second. And a comment for the vote. I don't want to, table it, my little comment, please.
First, President Urban.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas. Aye. Councilwoman Smith.
Um, with the perception, I'm going to say, I, but we're trying to get on the books as Randy had, um, asked us to do. So that way, once we have something in place, um, then we cannot tell anyone how to build their home. It's just to give, we can leave them with all their homes around.
So, yeah, we work with whoever has the authority for permitting in the city of Bogalusa. To not allow any permits until we get this finalized, and I'm hopeful that we can be back on the books with the next council meeting. So if you're ahead of that.
Because that, there is also a special road, you can come. Well, my district comment is that, there is a concern, uh, that's come to me with this, this tiny house that's existing. Uh, not regular hipper laws, but, uh, for elderly person to come in and live in the house. And, um, I, I've still, I've been told that there, there are laws, uh, perhaps AAP laws. About seniors living in these tiny houses. So I, I'm still looking for that information, so that, you say.
This woman, please. Aye. Councilwoman Temple. Aye. President Gillis.
Alright. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, that's what we put our, 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 our night. However, we will have some time here for any public discussion, if, if they want to speak, I'll start with Debbie McCloud. John McManus. Ma'am, you are?
Uh, Debbie McCloud asked me to come and speak on the path, but she had to leave. She just wanted to say how, how she and the community coming together with the warning stations. Um, and making sure that everybody had shelter, so she just wanted to thank everybody for coming together on that.
Thank you for that, ma'am. Richard Corset. And John McManus.
John McManus, two of two Bourbon Street. Uh, I want to start off, just, I want to try to be quick about it all. Uh, the main points I want to call, uh, call attention to is how the forum was handled tonight. It's far better than it was a week before Christmas. Uh, so I just want to encourage everyone to operate, maintain the forum moving forward. It was very heartbreaking to see the behavior of the lives of meetings, especially in just two weeks before Christmas. And most of the people on this council profess themselves to be loving Christians and one another. Uh, I would like to see the forum enforced, not just up here amongst us, but also on both sides of this podium as well. Uh, likewise, to my fellow citizens, there are individuals that work within this governing body that have done you wrong any time in life. I can give you a longer list. Uh, but at the same time, we have to respect the institutions that we are here, we are all trying to work together. So I just call everybody to try to maintain the forum. Uh, a topic that was brought up in the last meeting was issue with disseminating information that was, uh, irrelevant to the agendas. So that way people could actually be informed before they showed up here on the night of the events. A lot of the time, people were only getting information through the rumor mill. If there is any hindrance whatsoever, any problems whatsoever with that information being disseminated. I, as a publisher of digital filming products, as well as a software engineer. Can help come up with ideas and solutions to help make that more easily disseminated to the public. So that way people are informed. So that way people are informed and no one individual can take advantage of the lack of information being made available to our community. Uh, the main reason I came tonight was to speak on the, uh, gun violence that.
You want to do that at the next meeting?
No.
At the next meeting? Because it was announced that this.
We're not going to session on the session after public education when we focus, uh, so on gun violence.
Okay.
So it's not getting more gun violence after.
We're going to session after this, you know that? Okay. Well, then just to send home my point that I made, uh, we need to stick with the core. It needs to be enforced on both sides. I understand that the position you have is not a blessing, it's a burden. You have to be stewards of the city and you have to hold up a standard that most other people don't. Our meetings that we have here are public access, which means it is a publicly available place. Anybody can walk in here whenever these meetings are going on. They can record, they can take photographs, they can post them anywhere. Too many times we've made the news for how people have behaved in here. We can't let that happen because the example that we're setting in here is the example that parents are teaching their children.
Kenny, I want to thank you for, uh, being so nice tonight. You were, I gotta admit, you have them all down. That's good. And Mayor, I'm right with you on everything that you talked about, the tabling and what we need to do and discuss. And that you're gonna discuss with all your departments out there and everything for the budgets. I think that's a great idea to keep that all rolling. And Gloria, I know you do your backgrounds and stuff and everything and doing a great job. And Mark too, doing a great job. And I want to thank you all for, uh, what you all been doing. So listen to you, Mayor. Mayor, listen to them. And I think everything will be going fine. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Corche. Mr. Gray, Bronfield.
I'll be sitting by time.
Nancy Bridger.
Our topic that we discussed, we came to discuss is if it's a special after gun violence.
Is that what you want to speak on that? Just maybe you can't act this way, yes ma'am. Now, the example, Jody Alexander.
I should have been saying since the past, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Barbara Harry.
Well, I'm gonna say one thing, but I think I want to change it up to where someone thanked the mayor for continuing and trying to do a good job. And the council seemed to be trying to work with it. But we have one councilman, remember, that keep trying to throw him under those, no matter what you try to do. In this case, I wish you would kind of work with us, with the mayor more than you do. You don't even know why you're on the council. This might just be why the city, help the mayor make this place a better city for the year. And I would just like you to tell us why you want to be on the city council. I don't know why you want to be on there, but I'm not gonna let you tell.
No, I want, I may respond to you this way.
I want you to tell it to the public.
I want to tell you, it's certain not for the ones. It's certain not for the 200, 300, 400, 500, 600, 700, 800.
It's not for yourself, but it could be for the most. But this is why are you on the city council. This is why the help the mayor make this place a better city for the year. Tell it to the public.
Okay, I would like to respond to that. I'm on the council on this Harry, for the people that put me into the office. Because I, because, if I may, I want to. Because, believe it or not, I love Bogalusa. Bogalusa is my home. I worked hard the entire eight, eight years and going into my third, uh, my third term. I will assist the mayor as much as I can. I'm not trying to throw him under the bus. I just lead the laws. I did calls about actions that we take. Like, for example, I got called about the amendment of the, of the agenda. I got called about that. So to certain that I went with the law, to try to stick with the law, to try to change it there. It's because I, the love of this city is why I'm the councilperson, this Harry. That's right. And the mayor, as far as our relationship, I've tried and I'm still trying. I look over a lot. I've been told, I believe, because by him. I've been told I know what I was doing. I've been told, like tonight, I was confused, but I'm, I'm, I'm looking over that. That's why. That's why. And I'm very surprised to you if he posed that question to me. I, I done, uh, at your request, I honor your request. I've done requests throughout the city of Bogalusa.
Please move, ma'am. Please move. Please move. It's good for the goose, it's good for the game.
Uh-uh, Tom, no, please, please.
Are you talking to the sir?
But, uh, as I said, anyone, everyone that has asked me of a task in this city, I've, I've made my every effort to do what's right by the city. And by citizens in this city. And by, and by the mayor. The mayor, it's, you're, you're saying as if everything I say is against the mayor. Oh, no. We have conversations. Isn't that right there? Uh, is he still there? But, but, but we have had conversations. You know, so I, I just think that's, you know, that's your opinion. Everyone has their opinion. Like Mr. Faith said, I'm back in the, in the, in the, I'm late. I'm back, I'm behind, but that's not true. And I try to, to, my decorum up here is, as far as the, the, what, what is said about me, I try to keep the correct decorum. I do. But no, it's not about throwing the mayor under the bus. It's about, in fact, in fact, most of what I say, most of what I do is to protect the council as well as the mayor.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I consider and move on to Mr. Jay Risen, a waiter.
He's going, can I speak to him shortly?
Mister Michael Matthews.
I'm sitting by time.
Mister Daryl Smith.
Daryl Smith, one five zero five four hundred two seven five. Um, while the cameras rolling, I just want to say that two meetings ago, I asked about how Bogalusa communicates with the public. I was here at the last meeting and, um, people were coming in saying the meeting's been canceled. I didn't get any kind of official notification that it was canceled. Uh, needed on social media by any other method. So I think we need to, I want to reiterate that we need to talk, think about the way we communicate with our civilians. Uh, and it becomes most important during emergency situations. Uh, I'm not seeing it. Um, also talk about the process, what is the process? So this week, I called, um, city council number listed on the webpage. And I asked, they called, I took, two council people, councilmen's at large, uh, Tamara Smith and Penny Davis. And, uh, now I'm looking about for many, ate one of them, uh, and I, I asked Miss Penny about it tonight. She said she don't talk to me. I do want to say that Mr. Tamara, Tamara Smith had redressed back to the person that I could call her at, at a certain time, which is fine with me. But that was never related to this. I'm not sure, um, I mean, we, we definitely have a process that's not, uh, that's not working. We try to reach your council people. Um, and I've also been on the webpage to try to find out who is my councilman over there, Pleasant Hill. I can't tell from the webpage. Um, so now I'd like to ask the cameras to stop rolling because I don't get people permission to film me. So I was given the third grade last week, threatened to be kicked out, be kicked out of this, by Penny Davis. So, um, I don't know if there's an apology in my word, but we need, we need to get straight on what we can and cannot do in this meeting. And then talking about following the forum, my patience is running thin, um. You letting, Mr. Kelly, you letting people get up multiple times, but you stop me every time. I respect you and I sat down, but multiple times, people have gotten up twice to speak. And every time I try to get up to speak a second time, you tell me don't. Um, and I, I find this disrespectful. Okay.
Uh, Mrs. Smith, just a suggestion. If you look on the, uh, the Go, Mr. GoMys website, the GoMys website, you can pull up your, um, officials and it will list, uh, from your governor down to your councilperson.
And also, Mr. Smith, I'll do, once again, like, uh, I was, I see you. Um, I did relay the message to my second chair to have you to call me. Um, if you did not receive that message, I do apologize, but however, you and I do text back and forth. So let's make that clear for the record as well. You and I do message each other through Facebook, so, um, let's just be clear because I don't want the citizens to think that I do not respond to anything that you have to say, or anyone. My name is the nearest man, the councilwoman at large. My contact number is nine eight five seven five zero seven one four eight. At anyone's pleasure, you can call me. If I do not get back in time with you in a time of terror, just please shoot me a text. I will try to do my best to answer calls. I am a full-time mother and a full-time worker and a part-time employee that was hired by the citizens for the city of Bogalusa. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. Chris McClellan.
Yes, sir. Chris McClellan, number four thirty-nine, Bogalusa. I just want to commend the council and the mayor for the decisions that they've made tonight about this committee. I spoke about that at the last meeting and, uh, thought it was some unfair things going on there. And I really want to commend all of you for looking at that and seeing that it's not just the police department that needs to be taken, taken a look at. And we're free to table it to give the mayor time to take care of his commitment that he's made to those departments to do that tonight.
Right, and for the pleasure of the meeting, because we're not done with, uh, y'all.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Don't let them find out until I speak. I just want to say, I'm trying to hold my peace. But I've been sitting here watching the city council, coming to the city council meetings to see what's going on. We got to hear from the mayor when he has something to say. We want to hear from him. We don't want y'all be cutting him down. Uh, it, it's, and we've been voting him here. He's been a good man. He's been, he's not moved this city within the time he's been here, for the little time he's been here, then he's the last administration for the last eight years. And we need to take into consideration, he has good ideas and good plans, and I'd like to see the council work with him. And, uh, for y'all to work together with this mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And folks, it's clear our council meeting for tonight, meeting adjourned.
We are now, here now, make sure you're in the special section.
Special, special, ma'am, if you want to speak with that.
Would you all like to say where the special session relates to the, the private living communities related to the city safety and the vote to have the lead the exit to be self-wired?
And I, I look forward to working with them for this. Basically, what this special session is is time to hear the public's concerns. Um, I, I ask that you all keep it to two minutes max. Please be respectful. You know, it, we need to think about how we come together as a community. What, what programs do you all want to see from your elected officials? What, what programs do you want to see from City Hall? You know, we started the jobs program. Um, we, we've installed cameras around the city. I've spoken with the voters for the cereal alliance. Um, their interest in helping in whatever way they can, whether it's through a mentorship program, bring us your ideas to the voters. So at this time, I'd like to start by asking Mr. Jose Alexander from Equal Justice USA. Um, their nonprofit is a national nonprofit that has been focused on, um, violence prevention all throughout the United States. They have had various other initiatives, um, in larger cities, um, that is, that have been really successful. Their team has been here for the past year, um, holding sessions with the community, listening sessions. Um, and can you speak more to what you found so far?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, Jose Alexander, in my opinion, Equal Justice USA, um, is saying we're a national organization that works with communities in cities that are most impacted by violence. So we work with, um, Detroit, uh, we work with New Jersey, who is experiencing a high incidence rate of homicide. And we help, uh, Yalhax community to figure out solutions to end some of the violence that's happening. Uh, maybe shout out to the mayor who's working extremely hard to make sure that he's developing solutions, not only that city level, but also community level, to stop some of the violence that's happening. We started working in Bogalusa last February. We were able to build a rapport with the city of Bogalusa. And of course, everything that I mentioned that Equal Justice USA has done thus far has been on our dime. We do not require any funding from the city of Bogalusa. Um, we met in February, um, last year between August and I want to say November twenty twenty-three. We began to do a meeting with the community. We also reached out to council members, some council members at large, and reached out to, um, city officials, as well as reaching out to community members to Yalhax community for the meeting. To get to know who DJ was, and then we began some of our listening sessions. The listening sessions was a way to, A, build rapport and get everyone introduced to what we call a public safety ecosystem. This, this is not a replacement of law enforcement. This is a complement to what law enforcement is already doing, but it puts the public back into public safety, which from our perspective in Bogalusa, we do not have, and I don't think we've had it. Y'all probably haven't had it before Mayor has taken that seat, right? And so we want to make sure that we are putting the voices and we are putting the community back the resources that they need. Through these listening sessions, we asked them a variety, variety of questions around what is public safety? What does public safety mean to them? Uh, and what are their, what are some, what are some of their solutions and strategies that they're looking forward to? Um, the listening session was amazing. I'm from Baton Rouge, Louisiana myself. But I also understand that for so long, the community has been cut out of this process. And I think that we are taking a change. We are really interested about solutions, and we have to involve them. Um, they shared stories and information around their relationship with current law enforcement, public safety officials, um, as, as well as elected officials. And so we have a lot that's going to come out of their report. The report will also be published nationally to cover Bogalusa's history, the cultural nuances of Southern Louisiana, as well as our findings. And we're going to list a list of recommendations for not just the Bogalusa citizens and community, but also our elected officials. Because as I heard time and time again, the mayor is not the only one responsible for public safety. And so I'm encouraging not just community members, not just elected officials. What I'm actually encouraging for just the city of Bogalusa is to make sure that we all require the citizens to operate in integrity, transparency, and common loyalty. And that's DJ's assistance. So, thank you.
Hold on, come on.
I would like to say good evening, but it's very well night.
Excellent.
So my name is Jasmine Rooster, and I am up here tonight as a very tired, hurt, disgusted citizen. I'm completely fed up with the wrong battles in our community. At this point, it's nobody's fault, and it's nobody's duty. More to fix this problem than it is to move. We have to step up. We have to start making and taking accountability. In our role as a whole and as a community, it's time to start implementing preventive solutions. I'm tired, y'all. I'm tired. In my opinion, we're going to be a part of the problem, or we're going to stand up to the other and find some solutions to these problems. This is our turn.
Yes.
This is our decision.
Yes.
These are our keys.
Yes.
It's not just the mayor's responsibility to fix this. It's ours as a whole and this community. I am so tired of every time something happens. He's the first person and the only person to blame when we know that doesn't have a key in their name card. We know there are other people, other things that hold greater titles in this community. They can do better and be better. So I'm just asking the community as a whole to step up and take accountability across the board. Because we have been allowing people to tell the narrative of our community for far too long. So if we're gonna stand for something, or we're gonna continue to fall where he did. We all said we love Bogalusa, but loving Bogalusa and wanting to build Bogalusa is two different things. That's all I'm gonna say.
Jared Racco, six one six six one, Angeles, Indiana. Would I give you courage?
Yes.
Counsel, ladies and gentlemen. My point is that if one fall, we all fall.
Yes.
And we definitely have to get together on this. I have a nonprofit organization that, uh, is two thousand and nine. And I want to be a part of some of this problem. Because we all are responsible for what is going on in our world and our community. It's like a butterfly. As she flaps her wing, she actually gives wing to the atmosphere. Every inch of them, then you tell it, fly, see. Well, my ambition is a brotherhood initiative program. It's not a traditional thing that we do, because it looks like the tradition is not working for us. This is a non-traditional thing that I particularly have chosen for our black males. Which is to see about community. And we all know, in, in any community, the mayor of the community, the man of the community, is the most effective thing, that any specific thing, that brings the community together. And we don't know of any black male in our community that does not need some kind of retention. Whether it's monetary or whether it's financially or whatever. And especially in our era, which is a very low economic. In America, Louisiana is one of the lowest-income economies in America. So we can't just blame it on one source. It's a lot of things that goes into this. Like I said, I am the vice president and owner of Sister Sister Amy. I would like to have partnerships with businesses, with, uh, uh, schools, with educational. Because to tell the truth, I'm stepping out of the limo. I don't know where to lean. But I know if God has something to do with it, we all can have something to do with it. Because I believe this in the name of Jesus. Because I would like that to lean, and not one more that I would like to get shot down with somebody blaming their mayor. Or blaming their mothers, or blaming their father. Because life is a journey. And we all can understand where our black young males came from. And I'm going to speak for myself, for my generation. My great, my grand, and my father. Well, my grand, well, they were slaves and free. Well, my grand, they struggled just to survive. And my father, he just wanted to be free and be a man to do as any other man can do. And our young black males, they're weaker, but they're wiser. With all of that, with all of that, you have to understand, just like the GPS. When you get in it, it asks you. It asks you where's your location. That's the only way that it can tell you where you're going. So we have to start at the location and educate and going at that black male. Okay, they may use it. They want to be fun. They may want to be fun to be. They want, may have a, a rap session. But we gotta give them a purpose. Everybody needs a purpose. Like, this is my purpose. Everyone need a purpose.
Yes, ma'am.
You get up in the morning. No, you get up in the morning, you need a purpose. They want to work out. They're gonna be a muscle. Put their weight, they gonna get big and stronger, you know? Let them do rap together, but we need to do something. We need to do something about black males that are just talking all this for two hours. We didn't get anywhere, not that I can see. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Deborah Corstady, seven six four, Marshall, Virginia. I don't have much to say, but I, um, and this is a tough thing that y'all are trying to do. Um, when I first started thinking about it, I was like, well, how are these young people getting guns? I mean, they're not even old enough to buy a gun. Um, and I went round and round with that. Maybe the parents could be held liable if, um, it ended up being the parents' gun that was used. But with our current laws that we have to provide our gun freedoms, it makes it difficult. Um, so on the other hand, I think about prevention. Um, is it within the city's budget to purchase, um, handheld metal detectors? Where people that are entering, um, basketball games, football games. Um, there could be officers standing there that just, you know, give them a little wand, pass over, make sure that they don't have big knives or guns on them. Um, so I don't think they're terribly expensive. Um, I have considered the big doorway types, um, which are about some five hundred dollars. But you can't move them from one facility to the other. So I think the handheld, maybe the police already have those. I don't know. But if they do, they should be used at the entrance of the games. That's all I know.
Thank you.
Um, Kelly Davis, eight seven one, registered, Bogalusa. I am the director of a nonprofit in Bogalusa, but it takes a village. And I have been working with Equal Justice for the past year. And some programs I would like to see implemented would be invested in both prevention, violence and prevention programs. We held sessions last year, and it's unbelievable. The kids, the, they were, they were comfortable talking to us. And that's the thing, you have to get these kids in one spot, and they have to be able to trust you. Because you can have them sit down with this person, but they're not going to be comfortable with them. They were in space, and they were comfortable. The kids had us in their prime. Because one kid, we asked him what his safety, and his response was, he don't know what safety is because he's never seen it. One of the kids, which was one of the football players, in the last session in, uh, I believe it was October, we had. He said, there's no hope in Bogalusa. Me, myself, I have been, December ninth of two thousand twenty-two, my niece, my niece had a birthday party. And that's when a fifteen-year-old was killed. That took a toll on me. It's too much. I have been, it, this is too much. We put people on higher perils than they need to be. And at this point, it's too much going on, and I'm tired of it. The child that was killed last week, I see that child every morning getting on the bus. Nobody's perfect. He may have done wrong than the ones that, the ones that they're arresting, they know they have done wrong. But as a parent, you need to hold up to your responsibilities, obviously. Because if my child has done something, I'm not about to hold my child in nothing that can do. And at the rate these kids are going, I can't sleep at night if I know my child was killed. I know my child was when he shot at someone's home. You, as a parent, you have to do better. These kids need programs, and listening sessions is one. And they, they will sit down, they will tell you, they want a community center. There's nothing for these kids to do here. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, Monday is the birthday celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King. And I want to commend the mayor, uh, for his presentation and speech. Dr. Martin Luther King, a man of peace. He didn't believe in the violence. Well, violence came on Dr. King, and we're there. Dr. King went and tried to get a permit for the power to protect his family. And they denied him that permit. And what I'm saying is that the power on itself, that's not the problem. We're gonna have to reach these kids. We're gonna have to get a salary bill and try to change their behavior. And the only way we can do that is we're gonna have to reinforce positivity in them. Almost thirty years ago, I sit there, President Kellers, by the river. And I tried to kill our city, that we had a problem. I saw the problems come. But during that time, I took credit. The chief of military, Danny Jones, Mr. Peter Leder, and I was right. And he was right. We do have this problem in Bogalusa. When they had a time and festival. Our babies act out of destroying stuff. He talking about his little guns. He put labels on them, a solid on them, everything. But we were out Christmas. We were bound by eight spots. We were manned brand their home. We showing them, pulling people out of cars, punching people going down the street, pulling their guns out, blasting them, shooting them in the head. You're desensitizing these kids. You know, the value of human life is ripped away from them. Because we're not being responsible as parent, parents, and neighbors, watching what our kids do. This area, I stayed in Level Six, South Dollar Avenue. She stayed in Level Seven, right across the street. Couple days before Christmas, they gave up oldest brother, a military burial in Oklahoma. He was my hero. I called him headshot. We didn't have a head spot. We had dirt roads on our, and cars come through the land. And Charles Ray, I was playing this to Charles Ray. Knocked me on my head. I got back in the yard. Woo, a family of heroes. We're not there anymore. If we want these things to stop, we're going to have to go back to getting pills. If you take away all the guns, which you can't do it, we got too many machines out. I want to know where these guns are coming from illegally. I want to know where these switches are being made and where they're coming from. They go on these blocks to make them pull out batteries. New Year's night, I'm not in my own, I can't repair it. New Year's night, I'm flipping on everything. But I heard the automatic walkabout. And I called all my friends, and it's, it's going off on Level E, man. These kids are finding these devices somewhere else. So I'm gonna like those computers, be able to draw them up. But where are those kids doing wrong? It's an animal, I feel, somewhere in the ass. We're gonna have to reach out. We're gonna have to start being afraid and standing in the walls and get out. It's good to have police departments, there's no thing over in, uh, uh, what is it? A crime, night crime, Dallas, I forget. We gotta get back at the mentalist and the neighbor. We got to get our children out. Matter of fact, I, I, I shared a place that I saw, this lady who was at a forum. And she was talking about the council is a friend of the town. The school board is a friend of the superintendent. And the parents are friends of the children. And she says the children is friends of that. And that's true. We got to stop being afraid about the kids. And we got to sit them down and talk to them. During the King Day celebration, uh, Bishop Taylor, Superintendent Taylor, he got up and he spoke. And he said, we used to have, uh, was the cleanest service, we were cleaning up. We went in kids' room, and we looked up on their mattress, and we seen with their head. We don't do that anymore. Our kids lock up in our room. We don't know what's going on in that room. We got to stop that.
Yes, sir.
I'm calling someone, you know, the church. The city of Bogalusa, I love it. I was born. October the fourth, nineteen forty-seven, right across the street, we had a fucking mother. She always used to go, boy, I was moving, you open your eyes, it comes in the door. I love her. I said, I could have gone away. My kids love sitting up there and going. I got grandbabies. My youngest grandbaby is six months old. In two thousand and nine, I sent my son, he was on his way back to college, but my grandson was around twelve, twelve months old. I sent my son, because I had to go pick his mother up from work and pick him up. He's not my biological grandson, but I bet he was fifteen months old. He's just close to me in my body, between kids. I sent him around to get my grandson, and I went to pick his mother up. I got a phone call, said, hey, he's got it in my son. I called the police department. They told me, go on.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna have to stop you, so we can let some more people speak.
Well, just, just let me share this. This ever now, President Kennedy, for whoever, a young man, drew a firefly on him. If I had not hit my foul seat of my car, I would have never seen my first biological grandson die. So it's not a device. We're gonna have to change where these kids are here and here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So, uh, John McHann, so to her, I'm supposed to do that, please. Um, just- Um, just to explain kind of where I'm coming from. I understand policy is something we're gonna have to figure out moving forward. Uh, it's not something we're gonna figure out tonight. There, there's a lot of things that I can speak on right now as to what does work and what I know for a fact does not work. Uh, for those of you who don't know, while I don't just live in this town, I actually run a business in this town. In the past seven years, we have funded and facilitated youth events, youth friendly events here in our city and in our community. Uh, for years, I've heard that same sentence over and over and over. Whenever I had my child, it hit me hard when people would continuously say, "There is nothing here in Bogalusa for kids to do." So that's why we set out to use what resources we had available and make something for the kids to do. We, of course, ran into issues where kids were wanting to get violent, wanting to get aggressive, wanting to try and bully one another. Something as simple as car gangs and things of that nature. We had to enforce this sportsmanship. We ultimately had to come to some rules and regulations that were required. Anybody under the age of eighteen has to have a parent or legal guardian with them. There is another facility here in town, the Y U C A, that has still after-school programs focused on upper mobility every day after school. It is not even a block away from the high school. But the big issue is, just like with there, whenever you're at the Y U C A, you have to sign, your kids in that hand, you have to sign them out. At our facility, whenever somebody comes in that's underage, they have to have a parent or guardian with them to hold them accountable. Because if they come in and break something expensive, we're just out of it. If somebody gets hurt, which we have had incidents where the police have been called. I've been held at gunpoint myself. So we have had issues. And that's another thing to talk on. This whole concept that, you know, we can live in a Wild West fantasy world where as long as everybody's armed, everybody's safe. That's not the case because I've been held at gunpoint. I didn't get to my pistol that time. I'm training. I've worked as a correctional officer. I've been a professional sharpshooter in the background. I have all this training. I still couldn't get to it at times. Too drawn to personal. So the few quick things that I'm gonna say and I'm gonna get out of the way. As far as parents, make sure you are aware of where your children are at all times. They cannot go out for a bike ride without being involved by a dog or risking a stray bullet at this point. That's where we are. It's not an if, it's not a when. That's where we are. As a parent, and I say this to everybody here, well, is everybody watching at home or wherever? Know where your kids are at all times. You have to. It, it, it's part of the job at this point. For event coordinators in our community, every event coordinator, if you have anything for kids at all required that either an adult or a guardian signs that child in and signs that child out, or they stay there with that child. These children cannot be left unattended. And I don't mean that every child is violent. I mean that there are children that is left unattended, could potentially become victims of the violence that's already here. For our elected officials, those who are in the room, as well as those who decided to go home early and not take this serious, reach out to every event organizer in your community. Not just the ones you're friends with, not just the ones you get along with, everyone. Because it's gonna take a completely cohesive effort from everyone. If an event or a organization does not exist in your community, sign with the people or start one yourself. You have to show up more than just when a camera is available. For our local law enforcement, I've seen and I've heard time and time again, the reiteration that we need active patrols, we need feet on the ground in every community, not just some. And it's not just when a problem is called. That is reactionary. And as I always said, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So if you show up and you're just there, interacting with the children, interacting with the parents, let them know that you have a friendly person to talk to. All right? That's gonna help the community collaborate and cooperate with you. That's gonna help to solve a lot of these issues. And it's gonna re-escalate hope in a lot of people that feel like they have no one to call. And I don't say this as a person that comes out and, and is just avid military or avid police. As a child, when I was twelve years old, I was kidnapped by a police officer along with three other individuals. I watched a ten-year-old boy be beat into the ground. But at the same time, we don't have that type of police anymore. And I'm hoping that we continue to work to keep that from happening. We need to build up that trust when it comes to the police. When it comes to our elected officials, you need to be out there, not just when you get a call, not just when a camera is present. You need to be out there constantly. If something is missing in your community, it is your job, it is your burden to make sure it's there. As far as event organizers, I know it's gonna hurt the bottom dollar if you force these parents to actually show up and participate in their children's activities. But you know what? Sometimes you got to keep them before profits. As far as parents, stop looking for an easy babysitter. Stop looking for somebody, just drop off and abandon your children with them. I've had kids that have walked all the way from Columbia Street or Avenue B over to the far side of the terrace to participate in one of our events, just to be there. And every one of them has told me the same thing, because it's safe there. It's because we don't allow that type of behavior. There's kids that have come in and told me horror stories about how guns have been pulled out at the Bogalusa High School because despite the fact that we've had all funding for the bank trots, despite the fact that we've had the money for the large metal detectors when you walk in the doors, they don't turn them on, or they don't charge the wants. So they just stand there waiting. Kids will walk right past, they'll wave a baton, and then pull the gun out of their backpack. I've had multiple accounts from multiple kids that have told me these horrors. So these are the actions I have to do. I'm sorry for going over the two minutes here. It's just, I'm worried. I've got two kids. These are things that I know.
My name is Ian Gulliver and, um, I just wanted to say this is my child's second birthday that he has had to bury. Um, the people that should be here to give the conversation is not here. Um, and I think that they're, that was the reason that they left. But my child is fourteen. Um, we can't say without kids. Not when we're not around. But when a person comes to you, an adult comes to you and tells you, um, I'm not a person, I don't, even if it's not true, I'm still gonna check my child. But if you come to some certain people and you tell them what you heard, it could be a lie. But it's okay to go behind and say, to, to just check with your child. But then when something happens, you're saying they are only seen during the back of your business because that was against your child. My, my, my baby is terrified. He, he don't even want to come outside. He don't want to go to number. He went to school, I checked him out. He wasn't even comfortable with school. I'm not gonna say all of this because I live in Bogalusa. I'm from Bogalusa. My children are good in Bogalusa. My kids are not following children at all, at all. So I feel like I can say the things that I'm saying, but to be saying in a person or the people that need to be hearing isn't hear, isn't paying. It, it's really a thing. And it becomes to be, you can't let your children go to Main Street Park. Um, you can't let your kids go to Main, to Main Street, the grocery store. I used to walk Richardson Town, walk. I mean, I can walk from across the other drive out to Richardson Town. And the only thing I probably heard about was the dog. That's it. I could come across town and pop a quarter where I'm originally from. And I can walk from Mexico to South, whatever was going on in Popper Quarters, I wasn't scared. I'm thirty-one years old and I'd be in my house at a certain time because that was, I live on Main Street. You never know what's gonna happen. And you can't always say, as soon as something happens, or as soon as a gunshot is fired, the mayor. I want all this to stop because the mayor, I mean, all the little sarcastic jokes and stuff. It, it has to stop. People need to grow up and take accountability. And I don't say it has nothing to do with Bogalusa. Because they know it has nothing to do with Bogalusa. And it, it, so that's not anything new. But at the same time, I feel like something needs to be done. People need to be held accountable. I don't, I feel like you shouldn't hold a seat up here judging people when your life at home is in shambles. When, when your children are running the streets doing all type of things. And I say this, and I say this, and I say that. Certain people should not be in certain situations to judge this community, this city and talk to us one type of way. But at home, it's, it's hell. So I'm, I'm tired of it. And I just want y'all to know that this is my baby's second birthday. The one in December, that was the first birthday. This one, this is the second birthday. He's fourteen. He shouldn't be a pop area to another fourteen-year-old. So things need to be done. And it needs to start being precious. And it should be big.
Thank you. The last person, the last person tonight will be Mr. Daryl Smith.
Uh, Daryl Smith, fifteen, oh, fifty-four, Highway ten seventy-five, Bogalusa. Um, the leading cause of death in our teenagers is gun violence. It's not drugs, it's not vehicle accidents. According to the Center for Disease Control, the number one thing killing our kids, our teenagers, is gun violence. Seventy-something percent of that gun violence for white people is suicide. Sixty-seven percent of that for black people is homicide. We gotta look at the demographics associated with what's going on in our town. Uh, this evening, I spent a lot of time studying this, looking on YouTube, doing what I do in order to figure things out. And, um, I drilled a list of stakeholders and some thoughts I want to share. Stakeholder, got a list of N double A C P. Do we have any N double A C P here tonight?
I sure do.
Yeah. Great, great. B P D. Do we have a speaker for the B P D? And I'm getting tired of only seeing Troy every morning. We got chemical on the books. And we got crushy night on the books, and I'm not, I don't see them. And that proves the fact that we need to look at what we're doing with our police department and reorganize it so we have more patrolmen on the street and less people in the office. Bogalusa City School Systems. The same private school problem, this is a Bogalusa City School System problem. Do we have a principal? Do we have a secretary-in attending? Do we have any teachers here that are talking? Are you gonna be staying behind, teacher, somebody? Coaches. I mean, we just lost a child to homicide, fourteen-year-old. These are stakeholders that need to be part of this discussion. Students, young people, are, are we communicating with them? I heard a couple of agents tonight talk about that communication process. We need to hear from the kids. They're the ones committing this violence. Are we talking to them? Are we, the kid that's in jail now for, for committing this act, are we talking to that kid and saying, "Hey, what's, what's going on?" Getting into their minds. Because I can't imagine what kind of issue would cause me to want to shoot somebody and think that's the best alternative. Issues. Some people have nothing to live for. Uh, these are quotes, these are quotes off the internet from young people talking about gun violence. Some people have nothing to live for, so they just do it. Other kids said, "They carry guns to eat in the playing field." Another one, "I got a gun to have power." Gives them power. Um, considerate, other considerations, extreme desensit, 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 desensitization. Game, it was mentioned like game, TV, music, internet. There, there was a rap rapper that had a, um, a clip out about talking about, he was talking about gun violence. He was talking about, he said he, he, as a rapper, he would not let his kids listen to rap music. Wouldn't let them listen to his music. And, um, he said he might not let the lyrics leak, you know, to his kids. Uh, sexual assault, uh, sexual assaults on young people. This is a statistic. For half the women that I've dated, and I've been single for ten years, about half of them have had some issue of sexual assault, whether it's from relatives, whether it's from authorities such as their bosses, their teachers, police officers. We gotta get a, I mean, that's the thing that would lead somebody here to, to think that killing is okay if their sister, if their mother is getting these acts against them and nothing's being done. Poverty, poverty and hope is a huge factor. Our kids don't have no hope. That's why they do it. I'm running out of time, but I hope we have another, uh, another session because it's important. And one of the things that, that, uh, that the topic is, we've become so desensitized. We don't have a big audience here tonight considering what's happened. So that's, I have to stop. I'm running out of time.
All right. So that's gonna have to conclude our remarks tonight because we're about to lose more. What I am going to be proposing is that I'm gonna get with each individual councilperson and propose, and I'm gonna get together on some dates and come to each district, each district throughout the city and have town halls specifically on this issue. Uh, I, I believe that you all have made clear some, some many policy recommendations that you'd like to see. We look forward to including that into the upcoming budget, so we'll be working to do that. But we are about to lose more. We have to go. She, she, she got stuck outside with an incident. She, this is a family member, and she wanted to say something.
Billy, Krista Orey, sixteen, forty-eight, was lying. My mom's always there. Um, Darren Jackson, a young man had that murder, was nine, fourteen years old. My brother's son, my sister, was with somebody. He stayed at my house. We are very close, tight family. This is a smart community where everybody knows everybody. Um, my heart is broken. I have mixed emotions, I'm hurt and angry. Um, conversation in this head has really shook my soul. Um, I was informed that Sister Kate, Sister Gloria Kate, and we just hung went, went to Mira Moss Smith and her brother to one of these children's houses that was involved in the murder of my nephew. And she took me in front of everybody. Yeah, she took me.
I don't like that dress when she done.
No. Look, look. She, listen, 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 this ain't just... I'm just speaking the truth. Her because I have more in this case. I respect her. So it hurt me more to know that she was going and take someone to someone else's house, to a parent's house that's grieving. And you know that there was a part of a murder. She just said in front of everybody outside that Tamira Smith Moss and her brother Darren said Troy. Where Troy at? Am I telling the truth? Come up here. Come on. I want you to stand outside. This is our little team that I respect. Did she just say that? She just said what?
That they went there.
Cause you called them and told them to go by these children's house to be able to save you.
That's incorrect.
I was told that.
By who? By who? Who you was told that by?
I was, I'm, I'm not gonna.
But this, this, I haven't heard about that. By who? Who told you?
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna.
But who told you?
I need an attorney.
That's fine. But I, I, you said.
But you know who told. I just started that.
We don't speak about, we're just, we don't get the truth, ladies. Don't, I, we don't get, we don't get to the bottom of it though. Let's just be real. There, somebody dead. I mean, a child was dead.
I knew that. We need the truth.
Maybe somebody, yeah, we are. But I'm just, this is me and your conversation, right? I ain't talking about nobody else. I respect you. Did we have a woman on the conversation? We talked about it. And she admitted. She admitted to me that they called her to take her to, do you know that these children, that's why they scared? When you have parents of the supposed, when they, you have parents of your child doing this crime and they bringing the, the parents to come to us to question these children about a murder. They want to escape, right? They not gonna tell.
That's not totally true, uh, Chrissy.
I'm sorry?
That's not totally true.
I'm telling you, this is my, this is my, this is me. I'm telling you, this is my, this is my, this is me.
Yes.
I would be scared if you and the two more parents are supposed to be the murderers of the... If y'all come to my house, I would be scared as a child.
I was told to speak to the grandmother.
Okay.
That's what they...
But keep on exhumating yourself.
I'm just saying. I just told you that.
Well, I know you did. But listen, you are the city council. Don't, I, I got it. I'm, I'm okay. You are on the, we, we trust you and the people that's on the city council. But if it's corrupt, if y'all are going to these children's houses to get safety, that's what you got the police for. That's what these detectives for. You don't have no right to go question nobody's child. Even if you took them, you brought the vehicle, you in the vehicle, you was with them.
I cannot drive a vehicle.
Well, was you in the vehicle?
I cannot drive that.
Okay, but was you in the vehicle with them?
Tell your story, Chrissy.
No, I...
No, just tell your story.
You, you talking while I'm talking, but you know it's the truth 'cause everybody's hearing it. But can I talk?
Go ahead, tell them.
Okay, but you interrupted. So, so listen. I'm a...
This, 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 this not, this is talk by ways, it's our problem. It's not about the story.
I'm not talking about the story. But listen, let me say that the truth has to be told. You heard the truth. Okay. And they, they, they put the truth in, they get them. They put the truth, so give them here. Families are hurting. Families are hurting. These children, these children are hurting. But it's, it's really sad when the city council, when the city council sitting on board and it's involved in the murder. I, don't put it on nobody else, but if you're actually going to these people's houses. I'm talking about the city council, going to the city and trying to get a statement for these children. Wouldn't your children be scared? But if we took them...
But you twisted the word, Chrissy.